Six, six graders, fifty high school students.
Amazing. It's amazing how many kids go through that every year.
Seventeen annual.
The sixth graders are going, so my daughter will be there.
All right.
Oh, she'll have a really good day.
Yeah.
Get a bunch of stuff down in the upper classrooms.
I did it last minute, all for a couple of fifty foot drop.
How long taking a take dick, you think?
Pardon me?
How, how long you think it'll take? Fifty foot.
Oh, no, this morning he had to.
Oh, 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 I thought you were saying you had to deal with something.
Need to have list apparently.
Woo.
Somebody didn't show up with. On the river.
Oops.
I think Zoom is ready whenever you are, so.
All right. So if we're all ready, I'm, I'll call the meeting to order and we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mottler.
Graylow.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
T Z.
Here.
Hammond.
Here.
All right. Any conflicts of interest to declare? All right. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved with the addition of the parking lot discussion across the street.
Okay.
So taken that.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor with the addition of the parking lot discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Entertain on motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. Are there any visitors to be heard? All right. Then Drew, you're on. Well, no, I guess we got a couple of public hearings. Did you want to?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll open the. Well, we've three minutes.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know if you want to talk about them or?
Uh, yeah. What's the first one on there?
Um, the first one is the adding and amending definitions for open lots and animal feeding operations.
So we can't start on those until nine?
Well, I'm gonna wait a couple of minutes, I see.
Yeah. Well, has everybody had a chance to read the vouchers?
To approve.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay. Motion and a second to approve the vouchers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I can just quick do the parking lot if you want.
Sure.
Yeah. So the V C D C was wondering if, if we would like to sell.
Sell the parking lot?
Yeah, the, the gravel one. To the north of, north of the building. Just for, you know, housing or whatever. Sell it to them, but I don't know how we can. I mean, it's overflow parking for court days or whatever. But they asked, I told them I'd bring it to us.
How, how much is it used?
Quite a lot.
Quite a lot. Yeah, yeah.
Is it a single, uh, is, is there a, a buildable lot that could be cut out of it and still leave like a row of parking? Would that be adequate for overflow or? I don't know exactly how big it is, but.
Well, it's the gravel parking lot.
Yeah, but I was just trying to think without going out there and measuring, like, do we have enough to, to cite like a regular single family house on a portion of it and still live enough to like, you know, retain a portion that we could use for a row of, you know, a dozen cars or something like that for parking we need to do?
Probably not. It's gonna, because of the way the, the entrances are positioned.
Yeah.
And I thought there was talk about trying to put a storage building there too, wasn't there?
I haven't heard that.
Oh, a bigger garage, yes. I mean, that's been a discussion since I got on.
Yeah.
I actually had money in the budget one year for it, but then use it for windows instead.
Yeah, and that may, but that may not be as critical once the law enforcement center moves over.
Would we have, if the law enforcement center isn't here, uh, we've talked a little bit about the basement of law enforcement, the existing law enforcement center. Could that be an a public parking lot if we?
The law enforcement?
Yeah, the law enforcement basement.
I think we're gonna take that and make that staff and.
Pretty hard to get cars in and out of there anyway.
Yeah, but on those, on those court days, I mean.
Sometimes you'll have all.
That whole lot will be full.
Whole lot full here and then.
And the streets and.
Yep. Okay.
And plus, you know, I don't know if Scott's using it for snow removal, but I know when the county department comes in for some reason with a truck or whatever, they park over there.
Well, my understanding is V C D C is going through basically and looking for any bubble lots available all through town. So it's probably just, we came up on the list, time to ask us, so.
Yep.
Probably get another asset here.
Yeah, I think that's the case, and I think we probably should save that lot.
Yep.
For now.
Are they looking for multi-family, single-family? What are they?
They didn't say. They're just wondering if it was for sale.
All right, well, we've got, um, so it, it sounds like we, we, we've got a consensus here that, um, we probably don't want to put that on a future agenda.
I'll let Jim know.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I'll open the public hearing, first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance twenty thirteen dash oh four, updated with amendments twenty seventeen oh one. Um, and it amends the definitions for open lots and animal feeding operations. Would anybody like to speak to that? Anybody online?
Drew should open anyway, I think.
Yeah, I'd like your Drew's background on it, reasons for the change.
Uh, yeah, after our, uh, issue with feed lots, we identified a couple of changes that should happen to our definitions. The big two here in this change is the addition of, um, kind of the addendum to animal feeding operation. Uh, the winter feeding of pasteurized animals, so I'll not constitute, uh, constitute an animal feeding operation as long as the total number of animals does not exceed the, uh, existing permitted numbers. So, yeah, you take your cattle and put them out in the corn, that's fine, but you can't bring in another thousand head. That's the point of that. And then definition of open lot. Just so we have a, a definition that, um, matches up with the animal feeding operation, uh, that links up our definitions. That's what we have there and went through the planning board in July. And, uh, no public comments, nothing, no comments received or anything.
Okay.
And that was largely because there was some confusion, uh, in the court case about what was an open lot, you know, what, uh, there's confusion about what it is. And, uh, this, I think goes ways to, to help define that. I'm, I'm not sure I'm comfortable that it's all the way, but, uh, it's as good as we can do right now, I think.
Yeah, um, I, I'm interested in hearing, uh, so if our, for state's attorney is familiar with some of the history of some challenges we've had in enforcing some of our ordinances, um, what, what's your opinion on whether this will help get us, uh, get us into a position where our existing ordinances can be enforced the way we understand them?
Yeah, I, I share the opinion, uh, that, uh, Commissioner Hammond shared as well. I think that it gives us a better position. Uh, perhaps there's more to consider down the road. I think this is certainly a step in the right direction.
Okay.
All right.
So under that, man, one, the winter feeding of pastured animals, that number one.
Yep.
Um, as long as, what does it say? As long as the total number of animals does not exceed the operations existing permitted numbers. What if they're not permitted? Or if they don't have a permit from us because they've been in.
That's why I have the existing in there, because what they have right now is considered conforming. So, yeah, what they have right now is considered fine. So as long as you don't bring in another thousand head, that's the point of that.
Yeah, and I, I was gonna, um, suggest that, um, that in that definition, that word operations has an apostrophe in it. It, it just makes it a little bit more clear.
Yep. So my first read through and forgot about it.
Yeah, yeah, it's, uh, the total number of animals does not exceed the operations existing, because there, there, it could be read another way if it was, yeah.
And I, I think that, uh, first criterion is like what Drew said, as far as winter feeding, you know, an existing lot is the one, one part that's important there. The other part that's important is that, uh, it doesn't sustain crops, vegetation, and forest growth. If you're turning a herd of cattle out into eighty acre cornfield, uh, it obviously had growth the previous year.
What's, uh, what's the state's interpretation right now of that? Uh, of, so, so they, there was some discussion, I think, with the D A N R about, um, what, what's considered, uh, growth? So is that, is this address that?
Not very well, in my opinion.
No, which the state, the D A N R, um, didn't really want to talk about that sustain word. They just wanted to get around, ignore that word. We left it in here because if, let's say you just put a cedar tree in there and say you're raising a cedar tree farm, well, cattle isn't gonna bother a cedar tree farm.
Yep.
The primary use is still going to be the cattle. And D A N R is really uncomfortable making that distinction because so many people do put their cat, people put their cattle out on corn stalks. But building a pen like this is different because it's not really a structure, is it temporary? So D A N R had a lot of problems and this doesn't answer all of those problems.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do is just narrow down and say, hey, what you've got, you're fine, you're permitted. Just don't expand it without getting a permit.
I was a little flippant in, in this part and that, uh, the way I interpreted the D A N R's interpretation is that it would be okay if, if they could sustain six blades of gla- grass on a ten acre lot.
That, that one stuck with me. Yep.
And in part, that's the way the judge, uh, looked at it, I think. And I'm not sure how to handle that part.
So that's why the number ones are, just get away from that and focus on the number of cattle in the operation. Count the cattle, that's or not, is that a cedar tree, is that a blade, braid, a blade of grass, was it there in the spring, is it there in the fall? Just focus on the numbers being the prime thing there. And again, this hasn't been, I mean, most people don't.
Yeah, it's unfortunate when a particular instance pushes us to have to revisit these things when we all thought we understood them, so.
Yeah, that, that verbiage comes down from federal, federal feedlot regulations. And then down to state feedlot regulations, then ours is, is for local. And, uh, that type of verge, verbiage is meant to, uh, handle whatever's going to happen on the nation's level versus the state level versus our local level. And, uh, I've been thinking in terms of, uh, since, since the state has to make the rules so they'll fit out West River where you get nine inches of rain per year or up around Brookings where, where you get three times that, four times that. It could be that we could draft something that, that would be more specific for here that would fit our climate and, and, uh, the way we manage our land, it's possible that we could do something like that. And I've been kind of, from time to time, I'll wake up in the morning and go, oh, yeah, this might work, but by the time you think through it, it's, uh, uh, it's, it's pretty difficult.
Do we need to?
I'm almost convinced that having something that would be specific to here could pass muster. But I'm not, I'm not sure how that would be done yet.
Whoa. Should we consider, uh, defining sustain vegetation, uh, for, is that a way to, to address this? If the, if we have such a differing understanding of what the states means and we mean by sustains vegetation, maybe that's something that we can.
I, I would just.
Right.
Let's not get wrapped in it. Sustain, best. Sustainability is a, unquestioned. If any, I would just get away from it and just stay with number of animals in the operation. In summary, I thought, well, we talked about pulling that whole sustained language out of there and I don't know why we kept it in, but I would. Yeah, just focus on the number of operations, because then, or number of cattle. Because then we're not not arguing, getting drug into semantics and we're at least looking at a definite documentable number. You understand? See what I'm trying to?
I think so. I'm, I just, it just seemed that the, the issue that we had specifically with, with that, well, operation was, uh, was hinged on that, that language. And so it seems like, um, that the, the, all the facts on the ground were that we felt no vegetation was being sustained and that that was, was a big part of how they were violating the ordinance. So it seems like, uh, making sure that our ordinance, you know, since all of us expected that our ordinance was, was covering that, making sure that our ordinance actually does clearly, and maybe it's something where we work with, uh, with the state's attorney's office to figure out, how do we say it? But, you know?
Drug into something that what I wish, that I wish we hadn't.
Oh, me too.
Yeah.
I continue to wish that, yes, yeah.
If we would have focused on the number of animals in the operation within proximity of one mile.
Then we could have, we could have, uh,
I think.
Dealt with it on that front.
Yeah, so that, that's why we're kind of reinforcing that part. I think that's easier to defend than, um.
And, and in that instance, they did not have, uh, a, a permit at all, right? So they, they had to be below the threshold that you would.
They, they were essentially permitted for a medium.
They were, okay, I apologize. All right.
Grandfather did for a medium.
Okay.
The, uh, operations existing.
And they were pushing to large.
Yeah.
Gotcha. Okay.
Expanded significantly.
Okay. And if someone doesn't have a permit at all, they are allowed a certain number of, of animals, right? So, so that would also fall under this existing permitted. So, so not having a permit is, is the status, you know, there. Your existing permitted, a number is you do not have a permit, so you have to be under the threshold. Is that?
So when the two thousand seventeen zoning ordinance was written, the assumption was everybody's got a permit.
Yep.
Even though it's not on paper, air goes, everybody has.
Yeah, I remember reading that recently. Yep.
Um, so I got, I got a quick question. Um, I could be totally wrong here, but Mike, is there anything pending on this? How deep do we go into this discussion in the public?
Yeah, and I I think the discussion of that so far is fine, because pending isn't relevant to that.
Okay, I didn't know if opinions or anything would matter.
Where you're at now is fine. I'll let you know if it's not.
Okay, thank you.
Well, we need to keep it general because that's what we're trying to draft.
Yeah.
Ordinance for is to, for general purposes.
Yep.
You know, one of the, one of the ways that I keep going back to is that, uh, how many critters does it take to turn to earth black? Which is essentially what we're talking about when we're defining a, a feedlot. It's in a feedlot, there's enough critters in there, I mean, that needs regulation. It's, it's more or less trampling out all the vegetation. That's what all this, this vegetation, uh,
Yes.
Uh, verbiage is all about. And I keep going back where I can see you couldn't define that in a, say, animal units per acre on the national scale or even on the state scale. But we may be able to here because we, that fits a narrower set of, of, uh, physical environmental conditions and, uh, that, uh, then that would make it really a black and white, so it would be easier for, uh, producers to know when they're approaching the line to.
Over a thousand an acre or a thousand over a forty acre.
Yeah, yeah, you know, put it on so many an- animal, animal units per acre. And, uh, uh, smaller than an acre probably wouldn't, wouldn't apply anyway, because that would end up being in a small or unregulated, uh.
So do you, so do you do it that way, Dick? Do you, do you consider a temporary temporary feeding or winter feeding? You know, couldn't be so many over a thou- or over forty acres. So, I mean, because that's what we're, I mean, that's where we got caught was the, the temporary.
Right.
It wasn't a year round.
Well, it was being, you know, it's been that's the other part is temporary versus permanent. If you're putting in waterers and feed bunks, you know, uh, and concrete, is that still temporary? And we should, you know, it could be that we need to think about that part too.
It is. There's a lot, you know, there's enough people, maybe not this county, but there's a lot of people who put temporary, you know, on the middle of their cornfield, they'll, they'll put a water and they'll just farm around it.
Yeah.
For that reason, but you know, is there this still doesn't seem like we're addressing what we're trying to do, but I do like where you were going.
Yeah, do you feel, do you feel like that's a, a good way to move as somebody that's more familiar than the rest of us with that?
I mean, trying to accomplish the goals we're trying to accomplish. I think that, you know, winter temporary, whatever they wanted to call it, temporary feeding or temporary winter or what, temporary structure, however they.
Yeah.
He's a feeling this isn't gonna fix our problem? Is that what you guys, is that?
I don't know. I don't think it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
Now, you know, this is going in the right direction, I think, and we could go ahead with this as a, as one step. Uh, for instance, you know, what keeps coming, popping to mind is that my dad used to, when we lived in Northwest Iowa and he had a couple hundred acres with a hundred and fifty cattle on it. He, uh, he always said, boy, I'd sure like to, I'd, I'd like to just move out Western or South Dakota. And I'd, uh, buy enough acres to, uh, run X number of cattle, but I charge out there, it takes forty acres per cow to run a cow, uh, to run an operation. That's not the case here. And that's what I mean about it could be to our advantage to be thinking in terms of our climate. Uh, we're right at the border between tall grass and short grass prairie. There's a reason for that, mainly, mainly rainfall. Uh, and it could be that we could say that, uh, we, we know at a certain point that a thousand head of cattle are gonna pound the devil out of probably ten acres.
Oh, God, yes.
But they're, they're putting them in a eighty acre cornfield temporarily, isn't gonna be a big deal. You can go back in and crop that next year. Uh, everything's gonna be fine. But, um, this is, this is the line of reasoning that I've spent, I've been trying to go down and think about how would this stand up in court? And I think it might be easier to stand up in court than what we're trying to do here, which is pertinent to the whole state. Going down to, to, um, so many animal units per acre. And so that makes it so you could, you could run, uh, hogs out there if you wanted to, and why you want. But it would be, uh, in, in a large field, open lot sort of thing. But it would help us define, define it and it would, uh, uh, we should be able to pin down a number of animal units per acre that would blacken the soil and keep it that way. Because that's really what we're, we're driving towards.
So can you just put the definition of winter grazing cannot exceed two hundred cows per forty acres?
Yeah, yeah. And see, we could also have how many critters per acre that would be in the confinement, in an open lot confinement uh, as feeding operation too. As, uh, if it, uh, if they're there permanently, it has a, uh, going commercial feedlot. And you had fewer than that, fine, go ahead, you know, if, if, uh, on some lean years where, where, uh, feed prices are high and cattle prices are low, for instance, that you, you only, uh, you didn't have any in there for a year, year or so? Or maybe you decided you'd, uh, put your feet, foot in the water for, your toe in the water to the tune of, uh, fifty, fifty cattle in an acre, you know, fine, no big deal, but, uh, have a upper limit on how many cattle you could have in an open lot, even an open commercial. Does this sound at all
Yeah.
reasonable?
It sounds like it's going in the right direction and it's, it's measurable, which is, uh, you know, kind of critical when you, when you go to court. Um, you know, it's, it's nice to have incontrovertible evidence.
And I think if we were to go that, you know, I think it could make, uh, regulation a lot easier and it, in operation, you know, if you're in, if you're an operator in the, in the business, uh, down the road, you, you kind of know right where the limit is. No, uh, you got, you got a feedlot that's so many, uh, so many acres or so many hundred or thousand square feet that you know, uh, where your limits are for, for how many critters that you could run in there of sheep or cattle or whatever, you know? And, uh, and I think it could be more defensible in court too. Because you got something that's a definable, objective, hard limit. And I think the figuring out what, how many animal units per acre, we, what we'd wanna do is to, uh, ask our existing, uh, or, or take a survey of our existing, uh, feeders and, uh, where does it go? Where's that ground turned black under the, under the ground that they're operating now? Where do they think would be a reasonable, uh, limit? If you're thinking about it long term, I think even operators would, would, uh, go, well, that's not, that's not necessarily overstepping by the government. That's, that's to my advantage. I know, I know where I'm at. I know what, what's, uh, allowable and not allowable without, without a lot of wiggle room there, a lot of, uh, uncertainty.
Any other questions or? Would there be a motion to move this on to a second reading?
I'd move to go to a second reading.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to move this on to a second reading. Any further comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right.
So this, this one moves, moves on to a second, second reading. Then the second public hearing is, uh, the, the first reading of an ordinance amending.
The date for that second, uh, reading? We have to have a.
Oh, we've got to have a date.
Um, don't. Have you got at least five days or do you have to publish this one too?
No. Isn't it just five days, Gary? Yep. But I, yeah, we don't. Um, when's the end of the month meeting? So.
Twenty.
Twenty sixth.
Six.
Yep, that a good one.
Sure.
Sounds good.
And so the second reading will be on the twenty sixth of September.
Time?
At nine AM.
Nine oh five. Okay. Um, all right, so the second, uh, public hearing is, uh, the first reading of an ordinance amending ordinance twenty thirteen dash four, updated on twenty seventeen oh one. And it's an amendment to Article Three, Section three point oh seven, concentrated feed operations. Um, and, um, see, county conditional use permit and specifically removing a new owner takes over an existing operation.
That was just plugging in on all the hard ones that haven't been enforced and it would be extremely difficult to enforce.
So what, what, what are the challenges with enforcing this one?
If, um, like father sells his farm to his son, does that constitute taking over a new operation? Um, if they change between, uh, like a lot of guys are doing where they're putting him into LLCs and then the farm gets sold with the LLC later, we don't have any way to track that in my office. And if they had a C U P, we don't have the tracking on that. There's just isn't any of those records.
So I had, uh, I, I was curious about the, the reasoning, so that, that makes some.
So I had, uh, I I was curious about the the reasoning, so that that makes some sense, some sense different difficulty of enforcement. I um, because I didn't have any background for this one and it didn't seem really connected to uh, to the other one.
Yep.
Um, I spent a little time reading, reading through the ordinances, trying to see what what effects I could have on this. There's a eleven, oh, where we at, eleven oh five. Uh, let's see here. Eleven oh five D. So that's dealing with conditional use permits. To pull up uh, pull up my old ordinance tab here, just a second. Oh dang it, that's right, we've got a new one. Alright, this will take me just a moment. Anybody else gets there faster, they can read it for me, but then. So in order to preserve the intent of the zoning ordinance, so this is in the section on unconditional use permits in general. In order to preserve the intent of the zoning ordinance and protect the public interest, the planning commission may attach conditions to a conditional use permit. Um, kind of key to conditional use permits. A conditional use permit shall remain valid only as long as the original applicant complies with any terms and conditions of the conditional use permit as attached by the planning and zoning commission. And so that, that language gave me pause. Um, because uh, I mean, I I expect that we've got a lot of responsible operators, but I also know that when an issue arises, if we find ourselves in court and you're paying a good lawyer, that lawyer is gonna go over all the language in here, and if they see something like oh, original applicant, well, turns out your dad got this CUP, um, you're actually off the hook. So you got twice as many animals in here as you're supposed to, but you know, the conditional use permit here, uh, you know, the conditions of that don't apply. Or you, we, they said you need to, you need to have, uh, you know, no more than this number, uh, no more than this number of animals, or you need to have this special setback because of some, some issue. If we found that they weren't in compliance, I think that this could prevent us from uh, from potentially enforcing ordinance if if a smart lawyer can argue. Hey, this person is not the original applicant, and this says that these conditions only apply to the original applicant. So is that, uh, I I was concerned about uh, about taking that, that out, because otherwise every person that is operating uh, operating under a conditional use permit would be the applicant for that conditional use permit, right? So if someone uh, if a new person takes over the operation, then that person would need to get a new one, that person would be the original applicant and then uh, and then this would apply. Uh, is is that a hole you'd shoot for if you were getting paid big bucks to try to get somebody out of, out of the uh? Uh, process.
Mike.
But.
Maybe you should move up.
Oh, yeah.
So if the folks out there can.
Can hear me?
Hear you.
I would say, okay, because I know last time I wasn't close enough. Um, you know, without looking at the rest of the ordinances in that area, I mean, specific to what you just brought up, I think it's a valid point. I think what you're bringing up is a valid concern. I would um, I would say that it's likely that you could at least argue the interpretation uh, and the meaning behind it, which is what, you know? That's that's why we have so much litigation in this country is because it's always about interpreting uh, legislation uh, or ordinances in this situation. So I I share that concern. Now, how a judge would rule, I mean, is a totally different conversation would require a lot of research to know likely how a judge would interpret that.
Is is this uh, uh, new owner takes over an existing operation at that position? Is that redundant with that original owner? Uh, clause that that Jeff uh, brought up?
I'm not sure if it's redundant, and if it's redundant, that's fine, so long as they're not in contrast to one another, right?
Yeah, I, it this raises big question marks for me, and I I wonder if we would wanna take a second look at how these read together and get them to um, to align. Um, while, you know, fulfilling the the primary purpose of, you know, regulations that will stand up in court.
And I think that would be appropriate, I mean, just ensuring that we're uh, not creating new ordinances that are potentially um, adverse to other ones, and whether or not that's the case, I'm not sure. I haven't looked at those two. This ordinance proposal, uh, this amendment to that other ordinance that Jeffrey mentioned, I'd have to, you know, look at that and then there obviously, there's gonna be other ordinances that all fall within the same scope that would also need to be analyzed under that same um, that same question in order to determine whether or not we're moving in the right direction.
We have had trouble in the past with internal inconsistencies between various parts of of our ordinances. And yeah, I think that's a, something to be thinking about. Uh, I I was thinking of this as being redundant, you know, with comparing it with the the other part, the orig- uh, def- you know, having it as the original owner is uh, having that uh, rights under underneath the the ordinances in general. So I was thinking that it was not that big of a deal to re- remove this, because it's already covered there, but I may my reasoning may have been suspect.
Well, we can change original owner to current owner. Original applicant to current owner. Yeah, that was my thought for fix on this, or permit holder or something like that.
Yep.
Yep. I hadn't, I had some further concerns. I mean, I was just thinking through what is, uh, you know, when we grant, if we grant, well, I guess if the planning and zoning commission grants a conditional use permit, they do so uh, based on uh, an assessment that the, you know, the individual applying for the permit is someone that we don't have issues with in the past, that they have complied with all of our requirements uh, to to issue the conditional use permit. Um, and to me, it did seem desirable. Uh, I I hadn't thought through the practical challenges that your office might have when it's just you there and you got a lot on your plate. Um, but it did seem like something uh, that would be desirable for us to, you know, if if it's of, you know, a parent handing the operation down to a child, and we don't have any previous issues with the child, and they do the same thing, and our comprehensive plan hasn't changed to the direction of, you know, what we should or shouldn't do, our ordinance uh, governing the uh, feedlots hasn't changed in between. I mean, if we could find ourselves fifty years down the road with a different situation than what we have now, so you know, if if all those things are true, then I could see it being pretty perfunctory, getting that conditional use permit for an existing operation that's had a good. You don't see that as
No.
As simple.
No, I see that as being a major obstacle for operators trying to come back in. Every single time, like.
Yeah. You need to go through the conditional use permit process to figure out how, what pain in the butt it is.
Yeah, yeah, I I don't see that being a punctual or easy thing, or oh, they've been doing it forever, no problem. No, I don't see that at all. I see.
Well, I don't know that that then is an argument, that doesn't land as an argument against requiring a new conditional use permit. If it's something that has all these uh, uh, all these boxes that need to be checked, all these things that we need to make sure we look at to make sure that it's in compliance with our current ordinance, in compliance with our comprehensive plan, then then to me, that is an argument that this may be odious, but we definitely need it, because it's important. My understanding of kind of changes in state law is that it had made it easier uh, to to get a conditional use permit, but it may be that actually they just permit, I mean, I think that at this point, state law is uh, is is very strong at protecting the interests of a conditional use permit holder. So I think that once a person has a conditional use permit, it becomes very challenging um, for anyone to 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 contest that for any reason. I mean, I think you have to live within a mile, be a property owner or a renter within a mile of the operation um, before you can even have the standing to make a claim. If you do make a claim and you fail uh, because you feel like this operation is not, you know, for whatever reason, is not in compliance, and so you're, you know, suing about it. If you lose, you you have all those legal fees on you as an individual. So I mean, I think that um, if if getting a conditional use permit is the place where you have to jump through all the difficult hoops to make sure that we are carefully following what sounds like robust and important ordinances, uh, then we wanna make sure that there aren't very many loopholes that a person can skate through with that. If somebody from out of state, you know, comes in and purchases a uh, an operation here, and that person is a much less responsible operator than the person we had before. Um, I think that the way that state law is written right now, it would be very challenging for us to, you know, to to do much about that, and and I think that requiring that new operator to come in, demonstrate they're gonna be using it uh, responsibly is important. I mean, if we wanna have something in where we have some sort of uh, um, you know, if it's a a handed down to a family member, because we wanna make it, we wanna make sure we're not putting undue burdens on on families that are trying to pass down their uh, their assets to their children, and we, you know, decide that we we feel like the the parents being good enough is a good enough evidence that the kids are gonna manage it as responsibly as the parents did. You know, maybe, maybe that's something that we would consider, but I think that blanket saying it's too difficult to 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 review these is is, I I'm not entirely comfortable with that line of reasoning, I think.
I think it's just a fact. It just is, I mean, every one of these ends up in some kind of fight every time. Um, and we don't have a lot of documentation supported for the resources to enforce it.
Hmm. What other business do we, are we gonna do this to? I mean, cause I'm assuming you're kind of pinpointing livestock right now. No, what we're doing right now is we're discussing taking language out of our current ordinance. So I'm not saying, you know, we need to tack this on. New owner comes in and wants to take over this business, we're not just talking livestock, we're talking every conditional use permit that we give out. Which encompasses more than just livestock. Well, at this point, we don't have that in here for all of our conditional use permits, but we could, you know, if that's what we if we think is appropriate, then maybe we should add it. If you jump down into eleven point oh five, that affects the rest of the ordinance. Oh, so so you're thinking that. Whatever we give a conditional use permit out for, you're saying they need to come back in if they wanna sell their business. Well, no, I think that if if right now, other conditional use permits can transfer with sale, then I think that it isn't really important we address eleven oh five, because right now, all of those conditional use permits are possibly getting into a legal loophole where we wouldn't be able to we wouldn't be able to say you need to follow the conditions of this conditional use permit, so I I think so, but I don't think that that is bearing on. You were just saying to Drew that, you know, we we need to maybe the new owner is not as conscientious as the or the original owner is not as conscientious as what the new owner might be, and we need to be able to go through that and have them jump through the hoops. The all I'm saying is we're gonna do that with every business that has a conditional use, not just livestock. So I think that, I think that changing eleven oh five would would do that, and I think that that's a, that's a good thing, yep. I think it's not asking that everybody get a new conditional use permit for, but, you know, perhaps it should, I don't know. Well, all I'm saying is if you're gonna do that to livestock, we need to do it to every business. And and it could be, you know, I mean, I think that a conditional use permit is is, it's not a permitted use, it's a conditional use, it's something that people have to have to do some extra steps, and that the planning and zoning commission has to take some time to make sure that they've applied whatever conditions are appropriate to to ensure that they're uh, that they're gonna meet the the length, the spirit and letter of our comprehensive plan and comply with the rest of the zoning ordinance, you know, so I think uh, that that may be something to consider, so.
Do we do that with um, alcohol permits now?
With liquor licenses.
Liquor licenses.
We don't do with anything else. That was a problem with Toby's and still a problem with WIPs. So as we haven't enforced it on anybody else in the past, this language as it currently stands isn't enforceable, that's why I was trying to get it out of there. Um, it's not a catch twenty two's point, because we don't have a starting point, we haven't been enforcing it.
Hmm.
There's no documentation, there's no mechanism to enforce it. That's why we need it out of there, because it came up in this hearing, just because we hadn't been doing it to anybody else.
So do we have a list of current conditional use permits?
Not a comprehensive one. It's one of the things I, first things I started when I got here was good, solid documentation and record injection. We did not have that before.
Okay, I think that's a good thing to be working on.
Yeah, yes, I started very first.
Yep, cause it does, and and we should be able to, it seems possible to get a list of current operators in the county, is that a true statement or not?
Possibly, I could maybe see if I is our, when he has office has that loose, but um, none of the documentations are in support of any kind of enforcement on it.
Okay, well, other, other comments? It it does sound like we may wanna go in a slightly different direction here, or at least um, put this off um, in order to uh, have the state's attorney take a good look at how these ordinances work together. Would that be your advice?
I I think that's fair. Um, I mean, I'd be happy to do it if that's the direction the commission wants, and I think that's ultimately up to you. I mean, I am the one that's going to, you know, if that's the decision of the commission, that's what I'll do. Ultimately, I think that, you know, Drew is the expert on this. Um, you know, if I'm gonna do a comprehensive review, it's gonna take a lot of time. Um, and I don't know what that timeframe looks like. I mean, since I haven't dug into what, you know, what these ordinances are from that scope, I couldn't give you a timeframe as to how much effort it would take, and with my current schedule and the state of the office right now, I'm probably looking at several weeks, if not longer, so I think that's something to consider for whatever that's worth.
Yep.
Yeah, try not to cut it too much into your sleeping time.
Yeah, I I, my concern is that this appears to create new issues, and we might not wanna go there. Um, uh, so my suggestion would be that we not move this on to a second reading, but um, you know, perhaps have the state's attorney take a look at it and um, the planning and zoning take a a second look at it. Does that make sense?
But what, so what is Michael gonna look at, though, if we don't have language? We don't like this language. What language are we, is he supposed to, because it's not his job to put the language in.
Sure.
That's planning and zoning's or ours.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think really, Dick, that the ball would be in your court there. Um, you know, in in terms of, of articulating a goal.
Yeah.
I knew you'd like that.
I wondered, you know, I wonder if uh, to uh, maybe what we need is some language that says that uh, defining what a new no- new owner is, that would exclude uh, family members or uh, subsequent corporations made up entirely of the the present ownership.
How would we be notified of change in ownership?
And make it a requirement that um, that that if it's, if it changed, yeah.
We don't have a base to start from to start enforcing that on everybody.
Yeah, I mean, it it is, so it seems like the parallel is a liquor license. How how do, how do we find out that a a restaurant changes hands and?
It's a liquor license has two parts, the theoretically the condition commercial use in the bar and whatever else, and then the liquor license, which is separate. We don't have a CUP for hogs, and then a hog license they renew every year. We don't have that in state's office code.
So you.
It's renewal.
It's the renewal that triggers. Yeah, so I I I like where you're, where you're going with that, um, and I I I wonder if it could somehow be articulated in a workable framework.
Yeah, that does relieve relieve his burden of of trying to keep track of ownership of all its property. So guess we could require orders of conditional use permits to notify the planning office of changes of ownership. And just drop it in that file.
And then we find out about it ten years later if they don't do it.
Yeah.
But then we can go to court.
That happened, we suddenly.
Would the commission wanna go to court on something like that?
Yeah.
Um, are we putting ourselves in a position where we're invalidating the zoning ordinance, because we weren't enforcing it ten, twenty, thirty years ago?
Good point. Yeah, this may be one of those things that just needs a a little more, a little more thought, but I, you know, go- going forward and approving something that we know has a problem with another existing ordinance, I I I really don't. Another existing ordinance, I, I, I really don't, I, I hate that idea.
Right now, there's a number of instances other than animal feeding operations where we. Find out during the, um. Analysis, the, uh, aerial photo analysis of the properties, you know, we. We routinely find, uh, six new grain bins somewhere. Uh, that, uh, or we only find out by, by, uh, having the, the. The flyovers that we, the, one of the reasons we have that. Additions, uh, new buildings up on, uh, uh, acreages, farmsteads, whatever. Uh, we find new buildings, uh, accidentally that never had a build up permit for any of those. Uh, so. I think the idea of, of that, uh. Having the. Animal feeding operations. Change of ownership can't be de- detected by a flyover.
Can it be detected on the tax rolls?
Nope.
No.
Nothing on there to trigger it, I mean, other than a change of a name.
Right.
But then the property, I mean, Beacon would show that.
Another thing that are probably beyond this conversation really, but what is. Constituting a change of ownership, if you put something into a corporation or an LLC at any time, that ownership group can also always change.
LLCs or trusts, you know, things like that.
They can be pretty fluid.
I, I guess my take on this is, are we making this more difficult than it is because. Even a current owner's situation can change and they can be not compliant with the CUP, correct? I mean, his life changes, something changes, where all of a sudden, things go awry, so that's, you know, not gonna change. Anything. So removing that is, you know, are, are we overthinking it, is? Because if something does happen, whether it's the original owner, new order owner, we're gonna have to address it. And possibly end up in court like we did before, you know, so, um. I, that, that's my take on it.
Yeah, I, I think to follow up on that, that, uh. Our. Our violations of our conditional use permits. Uh, for whatever, whatever the cond- conditional use is issued for. It's all complaint based, we, we don't go out and do annual inspections. This quarter of the county, that quarter of the county, like, uh, the assessors do on, on the ground, uh, uh, changes. And that's the way the state works too, they, they, uh. They, for large operations, they do have inspections every five years, thereabouts. Uh, but they have staff hired to do that. And, uh. And I guess if, uh, we had a complaint for a animal feeding operation. I guess we, um, go out on the ground and you, uh, ask the. Uh, the folks upstairs, who owns that property at this point? And it doesn't matter who owns the property, if there's a violation, there's violation, you, you pursue it. Um, based on, uh, the facts that you find out at the time of the complaint. Uh, no matter who owns the land, the land, the, the operation doesn't, uh. Our enforcement should not be colored by who owns it, only by what happens. So, in that respect.
So in the situation where. You get into the retirement age, you own the land yet under your condition, and you rent it out, you know, who's responsible at that point? The renter that is in violation of the owner, you know, so. There's a lot of times. So I think it's, kind of comes down to a complaint driven.
Yep, well, the complaint would go against the owner.
Yes, yeah.
They're ultimately responsible for the use of that land.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think that, you know, maybe the, the core of my longer term concern was the, the idea that, um. So if, if someone has an operation and then, uh, and then we change some aspect of our ordinance, uh, we don't. We, that person is gonna be grandfathered in is with the existing operation most likely, whatever they're doing, even if we change it, we're not gonna be. Um, we're not gonna be telling people you need to change something that's already an operation, that's not desirable. Um, and so my concern was just that, uh, possibly being carried out into many, many decades if it's. Uh, if it's able to be passed down and sold and traded to people that, that that kind of grandfathered in situation, uh, could, could become problematic long term. Um, but if that's something that we feel that the current ordinance would be able to, to address situations like that, um. Then, then I have fewer concerns about that, I mean, I think that, um, I think that, that looking at this, oh, not, yeah, the. Eleven oh five section here we were talking about, I think that that is a really good idea to make sure that the, specifically the CUP conditions. Are gonna be enforceable long term, um, and I, but, you know, I think. Yeah, I think that based on the discussion I've been hearing, I think a lot of my initial kind of wariness is, is somewhat away, so, yep.
So the. The terms of the conditional use permit. Stays with the property, not necessarily with the property owner.
Yes.
And that would be one reason where we wouldn't worry so much about. Uh, a new owner takes over the existing operation.
Yeah, with, with Dick's complaint based. Process, I mean, because you have to look at the operations that, no matter what, what business it is. They, a lot, you know, I would say eighty percent don't have a conditional use permit, just because they've been in operation for so long. So we can't place an undue burden on conditional use permit holders because of timing.
Yep.
Because if one person, if, if two businesses are doing the exact same thing and one has a permit and the other doesn't. This one can, this one without a permit can do whatever it wants, as far as changing ownership and selling this property.
Yeah.
So as long as it's complaint based, that, that would, uh. Encompass everybody.
That brings up something, you know. This, this operation is, is brought up something else that has occurred to me a few times, and I've never. Being an old guy, I don't necessarily always remember to speak up at the appropriate time, so this is being appropriate time. I wonder, now, in our, in our. Our, uh. Ordinances that we ought to follow. What happens in, in, um, uh, statutory law? That if there's a change at some point of a particular par- paragraph, that, and we make that change. It, maybe we should have a note in it that says, uh, this particular. Paragraph is modified on such and such date by action of the, uh, county commission. In other words, keeping track of ordinances that. Older conditional use permits may not apply to, or not have applied to them.
Can you?
So.
Explain.
Clarify that, yeah.
Dick, probably the easiest way to do that.
Yeah.
Is to require them to, you know, um. Go to the register of deeds and file that conditional use permit and the current zoning ordinance.
And we don't have a, uh, we don't have a requirement for that, too.
No, no.
Can you make a note?
Yeah, that's one, uh, yeah, that's.
Because that's what I'm doing.
Yeah.
That's the best way to do it, yeah.
And if you just, I mean, that's thirty bucks.
Yeah, it's just a miscellaneous recording.
Yeah.
And that's the bulletproof way to do it.
See, and, uh, when a, uh, a law goes from, from, uh, session law to statutory law. It'll end up, there'll be notes every time that that particular part of the code of the. SDCL is, uh, changed, it'll have a note. Saying that it was changed at, at a certain point, and. I guess really, if we do it this way, accomplishes the same thing. Require the conditional use permit holder to, uh, register that, keeps track of that for each permit. And we wouldn't have to clutter up our, our, uh, ordinances by, like. Well, sometimes it, it, when you go back to look at statute. There'll be, there'll be paragraphs that'll have, uh, uh. Amendment notes, uh, that get to be kind of lengthy and you go, wow.
Just make sure we put those as footnotes at the bottom of the page, not inline in the text, it'll make it impossible to read these things.
What, what the current thinking is now.
Tough like putting commentary.
Yeah.
Almost.
You know, the other thing that they do though is they also just give you the dates that it was either went into existence or modified. So even though it doesn't, you know, even if you're not providing a note, you could theoretically say, oh, okay, in two thousand and nine, this was changed, I need to go back and look in two thousand and eight. See what language was before.
You just clarified what I was driving at.
But documents get lost, but if they're filed. Then we're good, and we can, we'll just change the permit applica- or permit. Fee.
Or to include that.
You could, to include it. Gets done, you just take the whatever it's gonna cost and.
And, and what I'm, what I was driving at is what, what Mike clarified for me, thank goodness. Is that, yeah, in statute it says, as, you know, there is modified in this year, this year, this year, this year.
Alright. So, how would you like to proceed? It sounds like we would like a second look. At how this proposed amendment.
Just take it back, we'll take the plain.
Okay, okay.
Kick it back or deny it? How do we?
Uh.
Well, I think we can just.
We just let it go back, at this point, I, yeah.
Yeah, we'll refer it back to the board.
Make sure we, we'll, we'll through, real carefully and, yep, but. Okay, so I'll move to. Um, remand, remand ordinance twenty thirteen dash oh four, right? Updated with amendments through twenty seventeen dash oh one. Back to the planning and zoning board.
I'd second that.
For further consideration.
So there's a motion and a second to remand, um, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, so it's in, ball's in your court now. Thank you.
Two step forward, half step back.
Supposed to remind you to say something to the board, I can't.
Oh, what was that? Uh, oh, solar.
Solar, yes. The twenty fifth of September.
Yeah, what's the, what's the date?
Twenty fifth of September, last Monday. In September the twenty fifth, I think.
Yeah, we're, we, we want to have a, a meeting, um. On the solar ordinance, where we're at now and where we ought to be going.
Okay, not, not a first reading of a draft, but a, but an assessment of where we're at, discussion.
Discussion, yeah.
Discussion.
Yeah, right.
And it, uh, hopefully this one would lead, lead to the first reading of a draft.
Okay.
Uh, what we, information we gathered this time would be enough that we could, uh. Uh, put together a first reading and first proposal.
Okay, and, and what time?
Uh, five fifteen.
Five fifteen?
I know, I'm, I'm interested attending and you'll be there, so if at least one more is, then we should probably make sure we know. Right, but I'm saying if, if five commissioners are there even just in attendance and we're talking about county business, we probably want to make sure we've got.
Yeah, she, she needs to post it.
Yeah.
If you guys are gonna be at the planning and zoning meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. If more, if a quorum is, so.
I didn't think you guys were supposed to do that, not that I ever got trying to un.
You mean, go to the planning and zoning meetings?
Yeah. I think.
I, I think when it's a prospective ordinance, it would be okay, but if it's a quasi judicial. Uh, proceeding, it would not be okay.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, that makes, yeah.
Yeah, that makes more sense.
That's true.
Yep.
And I, I think that, uh, you know, of course, since it's our planning and zoning board that we're charging with this, that. We probably should be restrained in our input, but, uh.
Take notes.
We don't want to be, we don't want to be taking over the meeting, you know, we want, if this is their meeting, and we want to make sure that, uh. Uh, that it remains their meeting, even though all of us may be there.
Yeah.
Agreed. Yeah, that's a, that's a big step forward.
We are, we are citizens when we walk in that door, I think, is the way I want to look at it, except me, of course.
Yeah, but when you give public input.
Yeah, and I, as I've said a few times before here, that, uh, my highest ranking office is citizen. I'm first a citizen, second county commissioner.
You do give up some rights by sitting on this board.
That's right, that's right.
Okay. Great.
Thank you, Drew, yeah, appreciate you fielding all those questions, I. I was thinking of stopping by the, you were out last week, weren't you? Yeah, I was gonna come and. Try to get, get, get where you're at on some of these previously, but thank you very much, Drew.
Alright, Andy.
Sorry, I just had an item for you, I have, uh, sixteen X twenty six tasers, these are. A couple of generations old, we don't use them anymore, um, they were purchased several years ago. Under a grant from, through the attorney general's office, police department and sheriff's office went together and. Applied for this grant and, uh, received all of these. Those that I have on the list here, uh, are, those. Include some that were given to us by the police department, they migrated away from this, um, model of taser. Sometime before we did and gave us all their old ones to get them off their inventory, and that was done by actual of the city council, so they're on my inventory now. Since then, we've, uh, transitioned to, uh, a newer version, couple of years ago, actually, it's been a while now. These tasers are not in use anymore, but they're still on our inventory. I found that Lake County still uses this model and it doesn't have enough for all of their deputies. So what I'd like to do is to surplus these, um, and transfer those to Lake County Sheriff's Office's inventory. And I would just transfer those, I also have several, um, uh. Cartridges and other supplies that are consumable and not on inventory that I would give them along with these tasers, if that's agreeable to you.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to surplus the sixteen tasers.
I'll say.
Listed, sorry, Lake County.
Okay, so there's a motion and a second to transfer. Um, uh, sixteen tasers to Lake County, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Could have commented before, it shouldn't change your opinion, some of these tasers are non-functioning, so there's only a few good ones there, but we've. They're serialized and on our inventory, so I'm gonna give them the whole, it's a package deal. Uh, one other item, if you don't mind, um, along the idea of surplusing property, um, I, I won't ask for a decision, it's not on the agenda, but. I have a patrol car that is just going out of service this week, we're in the process of tran- transferring equipment. Uh, as you know, we transferred equipment from a Ford Explorer to a Dodge Durango, so a lot of the inside equipment didn't go with it. At this point, I just left it in the car, rather than pay somebody to take it out and not know what we're gonna do with it. I've got a call into, uh, Kenny Gerard to see if they think that might sell on a consignment sale, which they don't have a sale scheduled yet. Um, additionally, I've been, uh, checking in to see if there's another agency in South Dakota that might have need of a patrol car that. Already has a light bar and a prisoner cage in it. Um, I don't know what your thoughts might be on that. Um, I believe, you know, just like we did with these tasers, we could transfer to another, uh, municipality. I don't know what kind of money you might want for it, if any. Um, I just kind of get in a, a mood from you, if you don't mind, on, on what you preferred me to do with that patrol car. We'll have another one later this year, hopefully soon, as you know, we had, uh, uh, three Durangos on order. And, uh, one of those is delayed, and I hope to see it soon, and so we'll be getting rid of another car too, kind of similar circumstances.
I would think that many jurisdictions in this state are, you know, really tightening their belts and, uh, trying to make do with what they can, so I think that if our patrol car could. Serve another jurisdiction, that that would be probably the, uh, best use for it, so. Uh, I would hope that we could get some compensation, I think, uh, but, uh, you know. I, I don't know, I don't feel strongly about that, so.
I, yeah, and I think if we put it on a sale, you, you just never know, it depends on. If, how much two people are willing to spend, you know, if only one person's ever wants it, you get very little. Um, I don't know if it'll sell better with the equipment in it or not, I'll ask Kenny that. But if, if you're interested in transferring another entity, I'll, I'll look into that, and of course, I'll, I'll come back because we'll need action of the, the commission to, uh. To do that, so I'll come back to you with more information, uh. To do that, so I'll come back to you with more information, uh, when we do that.
Is there, would you have any need? For like, just during this next year or year and a half period of just a spare transport vehicle?
I already kept the last, the last Explorer we got rid of, we just put uh. We just, uh, there, you've, you've seen a brown patrol car around that doesn't have a light bar on it, that one, we just in the last few weeks, uh. Rotated out. And put that deputy in one of the Durangos and that car where it's in the shop now getting the stripes buffed out, well, we peeled the stripes off, but it left all eighty seven, so. That's getting buffed out, we'll use that for transports and the intention is that we'll keep miles off the van and extend the life of that van, because. When our building is done, we'll be transporting prisoners across town, but those are short trips, once or twice a week. I didn't see a need to be looking at a new van now. Uh, when I think that if we can keep, keep that van functioning, we can get quite a few years on, with just those short trips, I think it'll work good for us, but. Uh, to extend the life of it, I wanna put more miles on that outgoing patrol car, so I already have one, I, I don't know if we need another. Certainly, um, you know. Wouldn't be a terrible thing, other than we're just maintaining another car and storing another car here. Uh, if I can show a need, I'd sure bring it to your attention. We will have another one coming up yet this fall. That we can look at too. This one here is a two thousand fifteen with a hundred and eighty-five thousand miles on it. Maintenance been kept up, like Jeff said, I'm sure there's some agency out there that's already wearing out a used car they got from someone else and. Yeah, there's a lot of one and two man agencies out there in South Dakota that don't have a budget for a new patrol car. I'll bring you back more information when I get it.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, Michael. Our real estate. Oh, oh, sorry, fuel quotes, yep, yep, so Rod's not here, but I don't think we probably need him to uh. Talk about fuel quotes.
So I'll make the motion to accept Jerry's as the low bid.
Right, there's a motion and a second to accept Jerry's service in Hardington is the low bid. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, um, and now uh. Michael. Got our property issue here.
Yes, so. I'll probably utilize Dave to kinda drive some of this conversation at some point, as we're discussing with his expertise in the real estate world. The, what we figured out from discussions with the city is that ten foot strip of land. Uh, it appears that on Beckham, the, it shows about fifteen hundred foot stretch belonging to the county. As we kinda dug back uh, between myself. Uh, and the multiple agencies here for the county, as well as the city, looks like there's some deeds from back in the sixties that. Ultimately led to like a tax deed in the nineties where the county took some of that property. We were under the belief at the time that it was that entire stretch. It appears that it's about half of it from Stanford to roughly Tom Street, seven hundred and forty-five feet, appear to have been conveyed through that tax deed. Uh, according to the research I have found. Uh, there remains an additional seven hundred and some feet that really I can't find any a, accounting for. Through my reading of previous deeds back to the sixties. Talked to equalizations, spoke with Register of Deeds, we've looked at some different documents, I think the most prudent thing to do at this point is to get title. Uh, have the title company do a search on these, on this specific property, just to make sure that we can convey clean title. Uh, we, I did go over on Friday and speak with. Uh, that group over there and that, it seems like it's gonna be a process, probably a several week process, just depending on. What type of title research they've done in the past on these properties and what they're finding, I mean, they really couldn't give us a timeframe. Uh, it appears to be the most prudent thing to do, uh, in, in order to ensure that we're conveying um, clean title, otherwise I don't think we can ensure that. Um, that also leads to the question of doing the same with the seven acres of land, uh, that we've also, you know. Come to an agreement with the city on. That seems like from, uh, my understanding is that they can do that title search a lot sooner, or in a lot less time, they imagine, I think they can do that pretty quickly, given. Uh, its recent history, they can, they can utilize that to some extent to, to pretty quickly uh, move that forward, but it's this ten foot strip of land. That we're likely just gonna have to kinda put on the back burner. Um, I've been in discussions a little bit with the city. Uh, as well, just in, you know, with, they were the ones who brought it to my attention, so they're aware of this issue and kinda where the direction, the, the county may be going. With uh, a formal approval of moving forward with the title. Uh, search through the, through action today.
So, uh, for, for clarity, so are we considering uh, the title search on both the ten foot strip and the seven acre? Uh, with us paying for both of those?
That would be certainly my recommendation, just, yeah, just for, you know, I, I. That will ensure that there's no problem with ownership down the road and that, you know, that's the purpose of title insurance, ensuring that. Right, you know, we have full understanding of the previous ownership and ensuring that we have clean title, I think that puts us in an advantage. Uh, an advantageous position, ensuring that we're not building, um, you know, speci- especially on that seven acres, we're not starting to. Uh, do something on those seven acres that ultimately.
Okay.
Be questioned.
I think my only, my only pause was, well, if, if we're selling the ten and they're selling the seven, maybe. Maybe they might pay for the cheaper title search on the seven, but uh.
It's all part of the negotiation that we've already approved, so we've already approved.
Yeah.
Hopefully we can just.
I think if everybody's on the same page on it, I have no issues with that at all.
Any discussion about the eighteenth?
Uh, the eighteenth as far as the, so, yeah, I, I did, and this is something when, when we get to executive session, I'll have a, another discussion with you guys, I have. And I can preface it here a little bit, um, I have received the purchase agreements back, I think we're. Well on our way, and I don't think there's any action that the, the commission needs to make today, I didn't wanna go over uh, the contract. Terms that have kinda been modified, I think that's appropriate to be done in the executive session, but I think we are well on our way with the conversations I've had with the city.
Very good.
Great. Yeah, so, um, so you need basically authorization to go ahead, do you have an estimated cost?
I don't have an estimated cost and I don't think they could provide it to us, they don't know the amount of work that they're gonna have to do on this.
Normal one's gonna be, you know, five hundred bucks. It's not gonna be exorbitant. It, it, yeah, it's tough on this one, cause there's no purchase price, usually it's a percentage of the purchase, so.
Uh, I'd move to approve uh, 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 paying for the real estate title insurance uh, for these two properties.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will get in touch with them this morning, once we're finished with this meeting.
Great. Alright. And Scott. Little updates on the. Courthouse project and the flooring.
Yeah. Solid thing is gonna start to loosen here next week, so. Wanna find another place to have any meetings by the next thirty days, I'm guessing. They're slated fifty-one, they, they've slated fifty-one days here in the basement, but a lot of that's in the boiler room. So, next week on the Monday, they're gonna start bringing in water service into here. And so, I imagine they're gonna be blown out this fall and some other stuff being taken place. It looks like, uh, they. They're guessing the tie-in will be about Wednesday or Thursday. So there'd be a day without water. I know, Andy and I have been talking back and forth on emails, and I've talked to the city about bringing in a temporary service. There's a hydrant over here and it shouldn't be that big a deal to tap into that and. Bring water across the street and just tie into the outside faucet out here and backfeed the safety center, might be a stretch to push that all the way to the courtroom. Or the way to the courthouse. Uh, but there's a potential, we could do something for the courthouse too, off the hydrant down on this corner, we can bring something up. Um, I have to talk to the city a little bit more about that. They said they'd work with us, do what they can. If we get uh, other entities involved, it's gonna cost us a million, I mean, like, if we wanna do like a big tie-in to the two inch line in the boiler room. Down here. You know, we're talking about cutting in a tee and putting in a valve and stuff like that, and we give it like, or evolve, of course, there's gonna be some more. Costs involved there, so that's kinda where we're at for water service for next week. So.
Cause how long is the water, did you say it was gonna be off?
One day.
So like twenty-four hours or, cause Andy, he, you know, he just walked out.
Yeah.
He said as long as it was back on by night.
Right, now, I'm guessing, when I'm thinking one day, I'm thinking workday. I'll get the clarification on that on Thursday. I'll let him know, hey, they can't be off overnight, so.
Right, so I mean.
Yeah.
We don't have to spend the extra money.
Right.
For a tie-in then.
Right.
Were they bringing a new service in all the way from out in the street then?
They're not, they're. They're not tying into the main. Cause they're not going across the street.
Yeah.
But they're. I don't understand why they're bringing it in. I mean, if, if you're not gonna bring in a larger line, why are you bringing it in? If, you know, you can't, if that's, for instance, if that's a two inch line there. You can't tie a four inch into a two inch, you know, we all know you gotta go to the main, so I don't know the logic to that whole thing, I'm gonna ask some questions on Thursday. You know, it, this has to do with the fire suppression system.
Do we know how old that line is that they're gonna tie into?
I assume nineteen eighty-six, is that, well.
This was eighty-nine.
This is eighty, okay, nineteen eighty-nine.
So you, we think they put a new line in? From across the street?
I'm guessing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That'd be good.
Yeah. I'm guessing they did. So.
The other thing is, this room is secure. So. They can't be left in here alone. How does that work?
And very precariously, um.
Cause I don't know how to lock.
Yeah.
That door doesn't have a lock.
Andy was stuck around, he could answer.
Well, he just walked down the hall and he can come back.
Yeah, he, he's giving me some guidelines, you know, as long as, you know, they're, we're. We're checking driver's license or taking down or, or copying the driver's license. Up at the sheriff's apartment, you know, there's. I get the impressions they're okay if they're here, because the only way out of here is. Out into the streets. Once they're in this room here.
I don't know, he's always made a point that that door had to remain locked.
Yeah.
So nobody could get in.
Yeah.
I just texted him.
But, you know, once they get down here to their equipment, I guess, you know, there's. Or I can stay down there with them, whatever we have to do, but. Yeah, Manny's the better one to give clarification on that. So I know that. The.
He's coming.
The project manager for L and L has a temporary FOB. That works that door there. So he can get guys down in here. I know last week he had the door open, and finally I came down and closed it, so, so I just, just can't have it hanging open that long.
We were just talking about if they're working in here. Somebody's gotta be with them, right? Cause these two doors don't lock.
This one wouldn't be such a problem, cause that's just an exit. Our more concern is over this way. Um, that's not a problem if we can somehow lock it, because they've still got two exits. Um, I think that's our concern that way, because there's, we don't want unrestricted access down that hallway.
There's no way to lock that door.
Doesn't lock, we'd have to see about.
Wedges on the other side, I'd take care of it.
Yeah. And um. It's, it's never been uh, modified to lock, because the. The jam's poured solid with cement, it could be done. Uh, we need, maybe talk to Scott about adding a bolt on the other side. Yeah, maybe a barrel bolt or something like that.
Some way to bolt it on the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah, that seems like the easiest way to solve the problem.
Then you don't have to feel like we need to monitor people.
They shouldn't have to get down that way anymore, they've already demolished out. Well, eventually they will have to get down there to do their tie-in. To the meter.
The, most of the doors on that hallway are locked, well, actually, they all are. Except when, when it's, when it's open, the, the police department's evidence is down there and when they're working in there, the, when it's occupied, the door tends to be open, we would just. Probably talk to them about making sure that's kept shut. Maybe that'd be an easier route than modifying this door. It's just making sure all the, all the doorways down there are kept secure. When's this gonna start?
Monday.
Okay.
I don't think I started hearing Monday, but we're starting Monday out there and digging in. They don't have this all working, that's all happening simultaneously, I would imagine it is. Uh, somebody probably down there tearing out that wall and building.
Well, we'll adapt to that, and then what we'll do is if they need access to any of those rooms, they can just get it, we'll. Work that out as it goes.
Yeah, they shouldn't have to need access to that mechanic room. And he has that. All key for that.
That should be okay.
They'll probably dig in the water line first, and then they can leave it, let it. Stay on during that, and the city will do the tap, I assume, out at the street, or wherever the other end is.
Yeah, for tapping into the main, they have a special tap that is.
Right.
Smith tap, they call it.
So they would tap out there and we could have. The connections going on at the same time in here.
Yeah.
Which could. Make it so it's more likely to stay within a day.
Yeah. Originally, I wanted two days, I said, that wasn't gonna work.
Yeah, that's why they want, they wanted to. Dig it in, have it open.
They got it down to one day.
Yeah.
It's a little more manageable. Any thoughts, ideas on the courthouse during that day shut down? Want me to try to get water back fed into there somehow?
I don't think Garden Hall's gonna push up three flights.
Well, we could, we could run a. Fire hose from that corner hydrant up to the building, get some serious pressure, then. Neck it down.
Where, where would be a good spot to tie it in, in here, the fire hose.
For the courthouse?
Yeah.
I would, you know. At first, I was necking down and come right into where they're uh. Where that up, where your um. Lawn irrigation is, they tie into there. And bring it in that way. How big is their plumbing up there? Pressure?
Same pressure. It's uh, water, water main pressure. That depends on, if you go from a four inch to a two inch. Yeah, that's more of a volume thing, it's not really a pressure thing, right at the, right at where you go. Between two inch. At the two inch side, it's gonna be higher pressure and it's gonna be lower pressure at the orange side. While it's filling, and then after that, it equalizes. So pressure shouldn't be an issue there. As long as when they crack the valve, they.
Oh no, you have to go all, just. Test it.
Been there, done that.
I did that once when I was a rookie plumber, took the top out of the faucet, but the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Old girl should save you more in, in Yankton.
The, the term water hammer, the, the emphasis is on hammer.
That's true. Leave, leave a tap open like here.
So. So I guess the, I, I mean, the bottom line is, can we get water to this building? During, during the day in a way that's feasible and.
Water this building for sure. That hires some pretty close proximity, you know, you may not feed that many fixtures, I mean, there are a lot of fixtures, but.
Not all at once.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Plumbing, the plumbing between here and the courthouse are not interconnected then at all.
Yeah. Yeah. It comes through one meter and then branches off. So theoretically, you could backfeed everything from here, it's something you're gonna get much pressure, like Candy said.
Well, water go back through those meters? Cause you'd have to go backwards through one of the meters.
No, then you'd have to have a separate one for the courthouse.
Cause if you connect to this building and wanna go to the courthouse, it's gonna have to go back through our meter. And then, then through the courthouse.
We'd have to do two, we'd have to do one for here and one for over there.
How much is all that gonna cost?
Uh, I'll find and get more details on that on Thursday, we have a construction meeting Thursday. Right, if I start talking to the city now, since I've been talking to Shane and some other guys over there. They said it was a doable deal, I can talk to them and see. You know.
Cause it might be easier to just close the courthouse for a day.
Yeah, I, I doubt that it would be a big issue though, if we fed it all through one line, uh. Except for going to be just flushing toilets and hand washing. Those are pretty low flow. Situations.
Courthouse has functioned in the past with the water off of the day, they just had to leave the bathroom breaks.
Right, right.
Problem is people out to jail cells can't do that, the jailers that can't leave the jail can't do that, so. Problem is people out to jail cells can't do that, the jailers that can't leave the jail can't do that, so. We'd wanna, wanna, you know, we would just house no inmates that day. But we need it to be that day, cause I can't control when incoming inmates are coming in.
Right.
We'd have to book them and immediately transport them out. Right, I would think that using the one fire hose would do the trick.
Well, and Scott's gonna find out exactly how long.
And Scott, I would, um, I know, I, I don't know if the court schedule looks like, I don't have any court schedule next week, but that doesn't, they aren't doing other things, I know that's. I think Tuesday they're, it may be some.
Right.
I don't know if you've already gotten that scheduled.
Yeah, I, I talked to him yesterday and they got something going on Tuesday morning, but when I look at their schedule here, um. They're safe, they're figuring about three days into the project, they do the tie-in, so that'd be, put us at about Wednesday, let things go according to their schedule here. So we should avoid that Tuesday morning thing.
Like, you know, we've been without water for a day before, and we survived, for the jail, it's, I don't think it's ever happened, we've been without water on both sides, cause we've always been. We've got two different water supplies.
Right.
And we've been able to move the inmates from side to side, but, uh, with, with few, if any inmates in custody.
Does the well work?
Nope.
Nope.
I know in the past, if we were gonna be without water, usually we'd have a designated timeframe, you know, between this time and this time, employees can come down and line up for this restroom. Now, for an entire day, uh, I don't know.
They're gonna be working in here too, so.
Yeah, it, it won't be practical, so.
Body in the Sallyport.
Yeah, yeah, well, it, 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 it sounds like we, we need to know how much it would cost and if it's feasible, you know, it, it'd be great to not have that interruption, but, uh.
But we're, we're not gonna be here to make a decision.
Right, we gotta decide today.
No, we don't have to decide today, Betty can make that decision.
Okay. Yeah, I think, just leave it with you, my guess is we're talking about a thousand bucks or.
Yeah.
Yeah, plus or minus five hundred or something like that.
Yeah, I can't imagine being much, if they're just coming out and tapping into a hydrant, put a meter on it and. Yeah, run the hose across the street, build a ramp over it and.
But everybody's gotta be aware that they, they can't drink that water.
It's not potable.
Yeah, cause it's gonna be hooked to the water fountain.
Right.
And I sent it, well, you guys are on the, on that email I sent out to all the heads.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll, we'll just plastic off the fountains for the day. Cover them up or.
How do you flush those lines and to make sure they're safe?
Right.
After.
Well, if you don't, if you don't use any water, the water's just gonna be sitting, it's gonna be the potable water sitting in there before, so as long as no water's flowing through, right?
Drains back down.
Yeah, I hear right, yeah.
I'll check it out with the city.
Yeah, where the itch is, is out at the tap, uh, outside. Cause a lot of times you'd end up with dirt getting into the line while you're making the connection during the, the tap and, tap and connect, uh, operation. That's where, that's where the water would end up being unsafe.
So it might just be better off to just not have water on the courthouse side that day. Save a lot of down the road issues. Well, save the plumber some time too.
Well, that's, that's gonna work. See, it's the next day after it's hooked up and running again, that's where you end up with the.
Could end up a problem.
Uh, during the day that we're operating on, through a fire hose would probably not be an issue.
No, but that's the. That's what I'm worried about.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a lot of, lot of uncertainty.
If you don't, if you just don't hook that side up, we don't have that issue.
Yeah, may, maybe the, the. The, the only, the only sort of certainty zone I can figure out is, uh, you know, closing the courthouse for the day. Um, and then Andy, I know you, you would still have, have issues, um, with transporting inmates, but.
Well, it's the captive, captive employees, jailers and dispatchers that happen to be here. Probably increase staffing, just so they could give each other breaks.
So court said they would, if there was no water, they probably wouldn't even be here, they'd close their offices, but the department heads, you can ask them, Betty, what, what they'd rather do.
Cause, uh, I'm, is, other than this restroom, is there, uh, is there a restroom that county employees could use in the law enforcement center side if the water was off over here?
Not conveniently.
Not conveniently, alright.
They could let in, we could make it work, but it wouldn't be convenient, but, cause it's behind locked doors and.
Right.
That porta, porta potty, that's one that the contractors brought in for their uses that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
We can grab another one for less than a thousand bucks, probably.
Yeah.
Well, if we, if we just decide to close the courthouse, I mean, we have to take it out to advertise that. And what happens if the day we're trying to do this and it doesn't work out as we planned, and then we have to close the courthouse and nobody knows?
How certain are they of the day that they'll need to?
I'll, I'll just go on by what they have here and we all know, they never know what you're gonna run into sometimes. Of construction sites.
Course this is at least easy to, to knock through, if they were on the courthouse side, then they'd never know what they're gonna run into.
That's true.
You know, as far as advertising goes, I think we get more mileage out of social media than we do out of actually putting something in the paper. So.
Maybe something just in the paper to the fact that, you know, we're starting up this construction and there may be times when the courthouse has to be shut down unexpectedly, if you will. You know, inaccessible, they just kinda let people know what's going on.
Yeah.
But if the department heads are okay with using the restrooms offsite, then it can stay open.
Or, or the porta, porta potty, but we'd have to ask the contractor, cause that's their porta potty, and we could ask them to. Add a second one for our use, uh, and add it to the, add it to the cost, that's probably the cheapest way to do this.
About a hundred bucks for a porta potty for a day.
Yeah. So we could do, we could rent one directly?
Yeah, we just go to, well, the same guy that put the one here.
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah. Yeah.
Alright, well, it sounds like we've got the options out there and Scott and I can talk, um.
I'll, I'll start talking to the city now about that whole hookup thing and potable versus non-potable, I imagine they, they, they can't say it's potable because, you know. They're coming through a fire hose, et cetera, et cetera, so.
But, well, and I doubt it's treatment.
What's that?
I doubt it's went through the water treatment plant.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, this, this counts, yeah.
Yeah.
Fire hydrant water does.
Yeah, yeah, it's off the same main, I believe, yeah. So, yeah, it's, it's treated, but I assume since they're bringing it through a hose. But I'll talk, I'll go and see, maybe they have. Special, maybe that.
Yeah, I, I use, you know, I, I use water out of fire, or did use when I was using lots of water, I often, when I'd work in town, I'd, uh. Uh, ask the city, if I could put in a water meter and put a water meter on, hook the fire hose right up to it, I would drink out of the fire hose, you know. Just because I said I did once. Just crack it real slow, go, yes, I know what it's like to drink out of a fire hose.
There you go.
But, uh, and it's, you know, it's good, it's chlorinated water, so it's, it's, uh, uh. Largely safe, except, uh, I, I worry more, I'm not worried about drinking, uh, myself at least, I wouldn't worry about that, but, uh. Uh, yeah, I'd label the faucets potable or non-potable, the, and put those water coolers. And, uh, I'd be more concerned about, uh, the water a day or two later, that's coming through the normal main after they hook it back up. Uh, depending on how sanitary they were able to keep that tap, tap site. And just, so I hadn't seen those where you end up with a lot of water escaping and then it gets back in the pipe, gets out into the, into the serpent pit and, then, uh.
Might even wanna.
Sometimes.
Pull screens on the faucets and flush.
I have the thing I read somewhere, some. But, the flushing process, they're gonna have to flush out, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, and those guys should know, know that, guys from your contractor should, should be pretty well versed in that, but, uh.
Alright, so, so maybe we can talk after you've looked into this a little, little more and.
Okay.
And I can talk to department heads and we'll see, yeah, we'll see where we can help.
Chris, I'll bet, um. I have a change request here from L and L Builders, they, they realized when I say they, I'm sure it wasn't L and L Builders, it must've been J L G, that. They had not, um, figured a fire suppression system in the attic. Somehow it was overlooked, um.
Even after Notre Dame burned down, for crying out loud, he was reading the papers.
Cause they called me and asked me about the storage up there, I see other storage up there, okay, well, by code, that has to be sprinkled. If we're gonna store stuff up there. So in order to sprinkle that area, it's another thirty grand.
Wow. We just moved the things out of the attic?
I think that's. You can move things out of the attic, what are you, where are you gonna go with the things that are in the attic? There's quite a bit up there, um. Had a crew go up there and we moved everything, we had to, we had to move a bulk of this material. Cause the equipment was going in that space or we had, we had to move it so we could get equipment back in there further. Um, so we moved quite a bit of stuff around up there, um. There is a room up there that has block walls. Um, though, it, it has a, has a wooden door on it with mesh wire. You know, that could, that door could come out, it's in a steel door, put in there, he could, just that room, the story records there. Um, they didn't look at that option here, so I'm sure that's gonna cost them, they didn't look at that option, et cetera, et cetera. But I guess that would be an option, but that room is full, so what are you gonna do with those records? I mean, there's records up there that go back to eighteen eighty-nine, eighty-five, I was in that room, so. And then I think you got in the whole thing, you gotta get all the records retention out of here, et cetera, et cetera, and da, 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 da. To start that whole process rolling, if you're gonna bring stuff down out of there and have destroyed.
I don't think on what's stored up there has to go through records retention, I think it's just treasures.
Yeah, I don't know anything.
It depends what it is, some stuff doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think there's anything up there that has to be kept.
Okay.
Yeah.
Your files.
His files.
What percentage of that, that's being stored there than mine?
A lot.
Yeah, I know, I know roughly, eighty percent?
Probably a good guess, yeah.
And I have, by federal mandate, I have to keep anything that's not, essentially fifteen years. Uh, there's, it gets further complicated though, anybody who's still serving a sentence, could have down the road, uh, asked to be, uh, you know, asked for. Some sort of review here and there, because they're incarcerated or they wanna have things expunged, uh, we need to have access to some of those documents. Some of them have been put in digitally, uh, we're, we're in a situation where from my conversation with Alexis, of when I took over was. I think twenty twenty-eight, we felt comfortable that we could get rid of almost everything. Now, we could certainly go through and start going through things now, and citing what we can and can't be, uh, or can get rid of, what we can't get rid of, it's not gonna be as. I don't think we'll get rid of. Part of that, I think we can give them one over half, that we can. Over more than that.
No, unfortunately, your stuff is stuff that moves further in.
So if, if you, if you had to draw a rectangle on the floor, you know, floor to ceiling, what, what kind of volume of, of stuff are we, I haven't been up there yet, so are we talking like a ten by twenty foot? You know, block of stuff we'd need to store somewhere, or is it, would it fill this room, or where, where are we at?
Twenty by forty by forty.
Forty by forty, that's a lot.
I guess.
That's a lot of legal file boxes. And it would take and, uh, you know, it'd take a lot of time, first of all, we would need to find somewhere that's secure. Ultimately, in order to go through these documents, we need to find somewhere else that is also secure, we, I'm not gonna ask my staff to go up to that attic to figure out what is it, is it? Need to be kept, it's gonna be hours, probably hundreds of hours of review, um, and I'm sure that it's work that we can get done, but I mean, I have a staff of five, uh, and so I think going through that. To some degree, we're gonna have to be meticulous, especially if we're doing this before twenty twenty-eight, uh, a lot tedious that we'd have to be post twenty twenty-eight. Uh, but regardless, like I said, because there are different potentials for expungements or, uh, writs of habeas corpus, there are documents up there that we're gonna have to be mindful, I think. Linda Weber in my office, she'll be a great resource, she's been with my office for twenty-nine years, Andy will be a great resource, given most of this is gonna have involvement directly with law enforcement. Uh, you know, we can certainly ensure, I think for the most part, that we're, uh, keeping track of everything and not getting rid of things, uh, that we know we need to keep, I'm gonna have to be really mindful and cautious.
Might almost be any, any person who's still alive could potentially wanna have their, something taken off their record, right?
These are minor offenses, if we're talking.
Yeah.
Class two misdemeanors and maybe the class one misdemeanors that are twenty years old, is it worth? It's gonna have to be balanced over risk reward of when we're gonna be willing to, to run that, um, and that's something we can make a decision on. We can certainly start that process, it's a discussion Scott and I had before he moved all of the, the documents, um, I just. I've been up there and I've looked at it and I've seen the bulk, it's gonna take, um, a lot of, it's, it's something that, I mean. Thought about bringing in an intern from the, 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 um, law school, but with the work in the courthouse, I just don't think it's fair, uh, right now to bring in an, an intern, because if I have. Uh, someone that's coming in expecting to get, um, experienced in the legal field, A, you wanna just put them in this, doing this for their entire semester, but B. Um, you know, there could be portions of the, of either semester, fall or spring, where, uh, my office is, is working remotely to maybe even a greater extent than other, uh, offices, just given the nature of our work. And so I just felt like it would be unfair to bring them in and not really get an experience, something I could certainly think about utilizing them for, but again, that, you know, that trip could be a whole semester and that really wouldn't be a legal internship, that'd be a. Record retention internship.
So, so I'm thinking, hav- having not been in the attic, um, and i- is it, it doesn't sound like it's a space that would ever be utilized, so. I'm thinking if by twenty twenty-eight, we have eighty percent of these things digitized, we would not need it in the future for storage, so I'm, I'm questioning what, what, what use could it ever have that might ever justify spending thirty thousand dollars on a. Fire suppression system, especially without modifications that might require us reinstalling that fire suppression system like over a new ceiling, am I, am I getting it right that that's probably not a space that? We would ever use as like an additional office or?
Right, right?
Okay, yeah, so that, that I think is relevant to me when thinking about whether this is something long-term is worth investing in.
I have a lot of his records up there, but there's some other artifacts up there, old woodwork that they've kept. A few miles over the years, so we'll, we'll want to hang on to that, because of what we're going into here in this courtroom.
Once everything's digitized, you don't have to hang on to the hard copies. So we're not in, optimizing anything further, and I want to clarify that.
Okay.
The federal government mandates a fifteen year retention, we started digitizing. Like fifteen, yeah, six years ago.
Hmm, so we're just gonna.
If you put back, digitized a few years even previous to that, I wanna say it's about two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, they're confident, Alexis was confident, and everything from one of those. Two years was digitized, and so talking about everything that's pre that digitization, we don't have anything other than those actual hard copies. Uh, we need to retain everything as a mandate for fifteen years, but my concern is.
Yeah.
You don't have to hold anything beyond that fifteen years, like I could get rid of anything from pre fifteen years ago today, that's been resolved, it's come to a completion in the court system. But my concern is, um, you know, at any given time, um, we're susceptible to having different, um. Yeah, you know, different court proceedings come up, the, the, uh, you know, the writs are the big ones, um. And those come up from time to time on expungement, and so really, regardless of when we do it, uh, we're going to have to spend the, the time and the manpower to, to. Go through these, to in a tedious way to see what records we, we need to keep and what records we're comfortable getting rid of, and really it's gonna come down to a policy. Uh, a policy decision as to where we feel comfortable getting rid of, of documents, I haven't considered that yet, you know, to its full extent. But regardless of if it's twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-eight, similar process is gonna happen, it's just we know we have to retain records, um, up until twenty twenty-eight, so there's gonna be a bulk of records that just have to be retained. But there's gonna be a lot more records up there, um, I don't know what percentage that we can give consideration to today.
But as you do, have retained. Potent means a lot of these storage units, cause where are we gonna put them?
And that's about five years, I would say five or six years roughly worth of, of documents that have to be retained today, that aren't fully digitized. So we're gonna have storage room though. Once the new jail is built, yeah, we, we'll be able to store them on sites.
Four years down, throw them out the storage.
Yes, and, and fire suppression will be in.
Right.
Yeah. So what would it cost to put these in a storage unit for the next, till the law enforcement center is done?
Why, why do we need to do that though?
Right, well.
Well, they've sat up there for years.
Just, just cause we wouldn't be up to code though, right?
Yeah. Bring it up.
It hasn't been up to code forever. We can wait another eighteen months. Once we move it out, we'll be up to code.
We're working on it.
So we're working on it. I like that. That sounds like a good answer to me, Travis.
Yep, I like it.
I mean, yeah, it's not something we gotta run out right now.
Yeah, right, yeah. Cause I think at that point, then you could make your policy. Cause we might find nineteen sixty-five stuff. You go, yeah, we don't need that stuff.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and then apparently what Scott mentioned the other day is that there's some stuff that is, um, really more of historic value that. Um, and, and so at some point, what we'll wanna do is make an inventory of that, um, and have discussion.
A lot of that stuff is not well preserved though.
Yeah.
Then we're talking World War One gas masks. And what else is up there that was interesting?
The school desk.
The what?
The school desk.
The tire.
Yeah, yeah.
Some conversations with the Clay County.
Yeah, but, but for example, the WH over museum might very well want a gas mask.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, just for display purposes and to talk about what.
What's that? Are the bats gone? I haven't seen one for, I don't know, like a year.
That's good.
Good.
That's an improvement.
Hasn't been a year since there was one in our garbage can though.
Yeah.
They ask about seeing bats in the attic.
All right. Question altogether.
All right, I'll just say bats are not on the agenda.
But the, is that, are we still doing the digitizing process? We started back from like. My third day on, uh, on commission, we, you know, we had some discussion about that, that it was ongoing and we're pulling. Records out of the attic and.
We were talked about it. We never did that.
Okay.
Cause just for this reason.
I thought there was something.
Didn't have the staff, but everything going forward.
Yeah.
But they also, so what happened at the time was they just piled up those records for like two years in the office in the corner.
Yeah.
Yeah. Also, we finally made the decision to digitize them and just, we send the record. I think you're doing it onsite now.
Everything that is now, everything we do now is, is being digitized and that's been taking place since whatever, whenever that was instituted here. Uh, everything going forward is digitally preserved. Uh, we just, you know.
On site though, right?
On site.
Because to begin with, we, we shipped them out.
Right, yeah. And now since, now we got to a position where instead of shipping it out, it's just being done every day. Digitization is happening. So we were ensuring that we have digital copies of everything.
Thank you.
Good.
All right. So do you, do you have what you, you need from us?
I'll be doing that, but we're gonna bring the space up to code.
That's good.
Yep.
Excellent.
Just architects. And the builders, so, um, so I'm gonna head out here on good news.
All right, we just saved one in the.
So, um. Got the, the carpet tile replaced in the big courtroom. They're, they're getting. When I say replaced. We're gonna get, we're gonna get. That tile for zero. Okay, it's gonna come with the. Two-year warranty, cause there was a ten-year warranty on the original. And so by the time we get it, we, by the time we get it onsite, it'll only be about a year, year and a half left on it. And it might be another year before we get it down. But anyway, we're getting the material.
That's great. A little savings.
Head twenty-two is. Gotta get it ordered on our site by the end of the year. So right now the carpet sample is up in Judge Byrne's office. So. I'll be working with her to get something picked out and then get it ordered and then. We'll store it onsite other than the attic.
Other than the attic.
So the jury room then.
A jury room in the hallway, and that was done by different. It's the same product, but it was done by ruinings.
Okay.
Who's no longer around. But at least we got that large courtroom, everything but where the judge sits, cause that's a broad look. But all that carpet tile. Good, we'll get that free.
Great.
So we still have to lay carpet in the jury room before the remodel?
Not necess, I mean, we can live with what we have there until the remodel, same way in that hallway, you know? Same way in the, in the, in the large courtroom, if you want, we can just hang on to that product to that, till that project takes place and then. Put it down then, or. You know, we could put it down now and like I said, pull it up. Cause it's just that, uh, laid down adhesive they use and it comes up pretty easy, but. You know? That's, that's probably an option. We might wanna.
Whatever we can get by with.
We might wanna order a little bit of older stock and pay for that ourselves if we're gonna. Go that route that we're gonna put it down now before that. Project takes place.
So it's not gonna look like the rest of the courthouse then up there, the, for as far as the carpet?
It won't look, I mean.
I mean, if we're gonna over buy something, is it gonna be different than what this is?
It already was different, so I don't know that matters.
I know, but now would be the time to. Standardize it, so we didn't have to have. Two or three different.
I see what you're saying. I told Judge Byrne, I said, whatever you pick out there, we're gonna use in the jury room, the judge's hallway and the.
Okay.
The expanded jury room and the, the small courtroom. I mean, it's probably gonna. I'll, I'll ask before I order, A, is this, you know, is this something that's gonna? You see this being. An option of choice here, a year from now, whatever, you know what I'm saying? And if it looks like it's gonna be around for a while, you know, the, the dialogue might be off a little bit. It might not be an exact match, but. Is that what you're referring to?
Well, I didn't know like if we had a spot, we had to tear it down here. We've just got one style of carpet that we've got laying around.
Yeah, throughout the.
Throughout the courthouse.
Yeah. That, that would be my, hopefully my intention, but. I, I think the only way to ever actually get there was if we did the whole building all at once. And that you. You would ensure yourself that that. You know? If you, if piecemeal, let me get down the road three years, that's, well, we don't carry that one. We don't make that no more, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's gonna be something a little different, but. You know?
She necessarily wouldn't end up doing that here, for instance, I, I wouldn't think. Just right away. Or the. Next year. Year after, if, if the, if it's in relatively good shape, we probably wouldn't end up cha- changing it out.
No, I don't plan on changing this out, cause we just did this not that long.
Yeah.
I mean, not necessarily this one, I don't think, but.
Yeah.
Second floor. Wasn't that long ago, but.
I think we could strive for having it uniform, but I think you're right. It's gonna be, it may or may not be doable. Now, uh, earlier we talked about signage on the courtroom, courtroom entrance too, and some of this sort of stuff. And I think next semester. I am gonna probably do an Ollie class on my courtroom tour of ten courthouses and. For our eastern South Dakota. And you may wanna, you guys may want to, uh, watch that too, because there's a quite a range of, um. Of the way that counties have kept up their courthouses, how they were originally built and how they were maintained since then. And, uh, there's a broad range of, of, uh, ways that it's been done and I'm, I, I think ours sits kinda in the middle. But I think just as a point of interest, you know, if you wanted to burn an hour, hour and a half, we'll probably do it in an hour and a half, do a slideshow and, uh. Show what, uh, uh, other counties, how they. How their, their courthouses were originally built and what seemed to be important, uh, at that time and, and, uh. What the, the strain of tight county budgets have, have, uh, done as far as maintaining those, those buildings. Uh, I think we've done fairly well, actually, you know, despite, uh, there have been accusations that we, we kind of. Have, uh, neglected the courthouse to a great de- degree, but, uh. Uh, putting it in that setting with other, uh, comparing us to other counties that have similar, uh, budget constraints, uh, I think we've done okay.
What Dick was referring to about entrances, earlier conversation, I asked if we could get rid of the paper signs on the.
Courthouse center or the.
About the security, is this looking kinda tacky?
The metal detector signs.
I look at the sign, signs every day and think we gotta do something different too. Even the ones at the water fountains don't dump excess.
Yeah, yeah.
Something else that looks, you know, cause the security metal detector is not gonna change. We can just permanently put that on the window with.
Right. There's, there's a lot of that, you know, that temporary paper signage in, in other courthouses too, but the original stuff. It's, uh, it was really kind of, uh, enduring in a way to, uh, see how labeling went on to, uh, label individual rooms in courthouses. Right back, some of it is, dates back to when the first courthouse was built in the, uh, eighteen, late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. And, uh, for instance, it, uh. Grant County. There's a, a room that is entitled Farmer's Lounge. And it's still, and it's in the old original, uh, beveled glass and then black lettering on, on that beveled glass and a, and a circle. Uh, entrance above the door. And, uh, just some of that sort of stuff. It was, was just really caught my eye. It was a lot of fun.
They had a farmer's lounge here too, it's on the original blueprint.
Yeah, in the, in this building, yeah.
The court services office was a restroom when it was built and through some research, we figured out that. Restroom back in the day was where the women and children went to hang out while the men did their business in the courthouse. Yeah.
What we'd call lounge today.
Interesting. All right. Anything else for us, Scott?
Don't think so. Mr. Ham and I are working on the courtroom security project. So.
Try to figure out how we can integrate that with the other project, you know, make sure we're not undoing and redoing stuff.
Yep.
So. We'll be conversing in the near future.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
He asked me to send him a file and I did, so I think it.
Well, yeah, there was, uh, something like thirty files.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Um. All right, uh, see bid packet number one.
We got the budget. Right? Twenty twenty-four.
Oh, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-four budget. Yeah.
Do we wanna get the bid packet out of the way since we have Dick and Lynn and, and Bill on the Zoom meeting? Just a suggestion, so that if they have other meetings, they can take off to those.
Guess we should, well, we could do a motion and, and, and a second for approval, but then we'll wait for Jeffrey to.
I think Dick on Strasburg wants to.
Okay.
Talk about it. We'll have some remarks from Dick.
Yep.
All right. So we'll be, uh, I'll try and be brief. You've got a long meeting here. Uh, so, uh, maybe just a quick update on where we're at. Uh, we are, uh, targeting to start construction on October second, Monday, October second. It's assuming, uh, the crop gets off and everything lines up. Bill can talk a little bit more about it with the subcontractor. Uh, but we have, um, we issued bid pack one, which is for the grading of the site. And we've got the results of that today and are looking for approval to move forward on that, along with mobilizing, uh, the site. And then if there's time, we sure can share, you know, like a rendering of the, of what it's gonna look like. Uh, we've got a, a groundbreaking, uh, ceremony. We're. Uh, looking at putting together for Tuesday, October third at noon, eleven thirty. And, uh, we'll talk more about that as well, but maybe first, why don't we, um, Bill, why don't you jump into the process that we went through and kind of what we've got, uh, coming for future bid packages and so on?
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, we went through the advertising process for bid pack one, which is just for the earthwork bid package. So just, uh. Um, site grading and getting the building pad established. Uh, that was out for bid. Um, we received two bids on that. Um, they are, um, within the budget, um, the schematic design budget that we had established, uh, back in like May. And so we've got a recommended approval for a contractor on that. Uh, Lieber Construction out of North, uh, Sioux City. Um, the next bid package that we've actually got out on the street right now and bids are due next Tuesday, the nineteenth. Um, is for footing and foundation, um, for the building project. There's some geo peers that will have to do their deep foundations. To go in, um, as well as precast, uh, wall panels, um, due to the long lead time of those, uh, structural steel. Um, and some, uh, some paving. We've also got site utilities out, so just trying to capture as much, much cost and information as we can. Um, as early as possible, just cause as everybody probably knows contractors are busy. So the sooner you can kinda get ahead of the game, um, and get bids from them, it's advantageous, um, to the project. So as part of that process, we get those bids in and then we, um, go through them. We do what we call scoping calls to make sure that they've got everything complete. Uh, we provide them a bid form that they have to fill out. And submit to make sure that their bid, uh, does match the, the contract documents that have been provided to us. So all that kinda gets done and then we, uh, present the bid tab, um, as Dick was mentioning, um, for approval. So. Guess the next step would be is approval of that bid pack one. And then we will send the county a contract amendment. To incorporate that into our contract and then, um, get a contract out to, uh, the earthwork contractor, so then he can mobilize. Uh, for that groundbreaking event. So.
So, uh, just a reminder on how the process works. So, uh, Beckenhar was, was hired to be the construction manager. So then they, they take the, uh. Take the documents, go out for bid on them. It comes back, uh, and then we review the bids. And then, uh, we bring it, uh, to the commission, uh, you know, for approval. In this case, it's only one. They usually, usually there's several. Several different trades, several different, uh, contractors on it, but, uh, we wanna get going this fall and, uh, get, get this earthwork, work done. Uh, then, uh, they're also, uh, in the request today, we've also got, uh, job site mobilization costs. Which is to put a job site trailer out there, uh, put, uh, a fence around the site. And other site mobilization costs, uh, and those costs, the way the contract works is we pay actual costs on those. So then when, uh, we're approving an estimate right now today. Uh, but when it comes to the actual pay request, they submit invoices for everything and then it's approved, uh, you know, based on actual receipts. But not to exceed the total. So the total today that we're asking for approval on is one million six, six hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred. And then, um, I don't know if we've got time, if you want to see, it'll take a lot of your time here, but Lynn, can you, uh, pull up, uh? Up a rendering of what it looks like. Um, we'll have this out on the job site for the, uh, the groundbreaking. That's possible to pull that up. Talk a little bit about the site plan on where, how it fits on the site.
Yep, there you go. Sorry, I think I was on mute. Um, so site plan, uh, just a reminder, I think everybody knows where it's at, but Sanford, uh, Stanford Street and James Street. James Street will be the new, um, new development in that, or new road in that development. Um, so kind of center of that, um. Um, I guess lot, um, open development. Um, Axon View, I think one of the things we wanted to make sure we, we tried to incorporate in the design is this building's gonna be visible from all four sides, essentially. It's gonna be surrounded by, you know, three streets and, um, other businesses and, and residential neighborhoods. So we wanted to, to make sure we had all. Um, aspects of the building covered in terms of, um, views and, um, aesthetics, um, to make it a, a nice. Uh, good looking civic, uh, building for the, for the county and city of Vermillion. Um, so this is the approach as you, the kind of the main, one of the main entrance coming into the building, um, we have a, a training center. And the, the law enforcement lobby here on the front of the building. And then I'll kinda just walk you quickly around the, the building counterclockwise. Um, the jail entrance is. Um, the jail entrance is actually kind of tucked back here, uh, so that door, uh, set of doors is the jail lobby. Um, you can see after the right is the vehicle Sally Port. Uh, this is the west side of the building. So again, coming into this vehicle Sally Port for patrol vehicles um, and transport. Um, this back portion here is essentially the, the jail housing units. Uh, it's kind of the southwest side, looking more at the uh, law enforcement center garage um, and kind of back of house. Um, it's kind of a staff entrance back here and a, a small staff patio, kind of what we're looking at. And then coming around again to the east side of the building to the, to that front approach again, where that main entrance is for the uh, law enforcement center uh, lobby and training room. Um, so most of the building materials, you'll see it's um, a lot of precast as, as Bill mentioned, um, going, looking at getting precast bids here. Um, and so just kind of keeping it pretty uniform and consistent in terms of materiality. And a little bit closer up view of the exterior.
Maybe we should just make a comment on the overview on this, the way that uh, the bid packages are organized. Uh, Travis knows this well. He sat through Travis and Andy and, and uh, Crystal have sat through, I can say countless hours. Many, many, many hours um, to get to this point, but um, the variable that we're using on this project is the vehicle storage. Let's say that we have a, another dose of inflation before everything is bought out and um, things don't go the right direction on the bids. We've got the vehicle uh, storage as the variable on it. Uh, we hope that that's included. But we won't know until we get further into the bid, uh, the bidding on this project. Uh, there are some uh, some hints that there might be some softening in the market. Uh, but I think as you get uh, you know, closer to Sioux Falls, it's, it's very, very busy there. So I think we're fortunate to have a contractor that um, has a, has trade partners that maybe focus a little more south. Totally is not uh, quite as, as busy there. I think we've got good coverage on it. Um, and just a comment on the team, usually we don't, we don't usually share too many opinions publicly um, in terms of how a team is doing. But in this case, we've got a really good team. We've got uh, good decision makers on uh, on the client side. And we've got just, just really strong collaboration on the design and on the construction side. So I think that's worth noting that we've got something that's um, a little bit unusual here where it's going at this point where um, it, we're kind of hitting on all cylinders on the design and um, and going into construction. So we feel real, real positive on that. We just need now the market to respond and have, have real competitive uh, subcontractor bids. Maybe we should talk just a little bit, big picture on schedule. Bill, you want to run into that maybe? Kind of where we're at with that and we're getting these early bid packages and ultimately it will come back to a guaranteed maximum price for the commission to approve.
Right, so right now we're, we're tracking with this earthwork package to break ground um, around October second, October third. Uh, as soon as the crops are out, um, then following up on that, we've got bids due next Tuesday for the next wave that I talked about. At that same time, we're also doing an overall project update. So when we come um, back to you, the next time for approval of a second bid package, we will also have a overall budget update at that same time on the whole entire project. Um, and then after that, we're tracking for sometime mid-November, first to mid-November for final CDs, final construction documents, which at that time, we will be able to bid out the rest of the items for the project that have not already been solicited in an early bid. Which will then allow us to establish that final guaranteed maximum price um, before the end of the year. Um, but schedule wise, so breaking ground with this early bid package two I talked about, that'll allow us to get footings in the ground. Um, which before the footings go in, we'll have geo peers, so that's our uh, um, aggregate pile that's going to go in. They'll drill a hole, they'll put rock in, they'll tamp that down and they'll build that up. Our footings will sit on top of that. Once we get that in, um, we will then be at um, kind of the mercy of our precast bids. So when those come in, we're asking them for delivery dates as well as obviously the pricing. And we'll have to weigh those two to see if there's, you know, the competitive uh, situation taking into account the lead times, because really we're going to be ready for that precast to sit on top of that footing. And so that will allow us to work through um, potentially some winter conditions and setting structural steel. Um, because we have the footings in the ground prior to, so whether that's ramping back up in February, March. Uh, April timeframe, we'll have to wait and see how those bids come in. And then we'll be hitting the ground running in the spring with everything else. So that'll give us some procurement time for some long lead, lead uh, items such as mechanical and electrical gear that right now, a lot of those items are out, you know, fifty-two weeks. So um, it'll be a good opportunity for us to get a little bit of ahead of that.
Any questions on that? We could talk all day on this because it's uh, there's been a lot of, a lot of work done. Uh, but uh, any uh, big picture questions?
I have just one for the general public and I think we probably know the answer to this, but we get this question a lot. Um, what is the projected completion date?
ASAP.
Yeah, let me uh, I don't have it, right?
We, we should just make a note on it. They've, uh, Beckenhar's got a projected completion date, but it's all going to come back to the subs in terms of how busy the subs are.
Yeah.
But best case scenario.
Right, hold on, just give me one second here, let me pull it up. We've got a preliminary schedule out that we've uh, sent to everybody, just kind of gives them a rough idea. But to Dick's uh, comment there, you know, we ask for input from the subs, that way uh, they're the experts in the field for what they, um, what they do and how long it takes. But we're looking at the um, winter of uh, twenty twenty-five.
Winter of twenty-five. And I think that's, that's just, you know, a good general guideline for people, but we are getting that question from the public. So I thought it would be good to ask that.
Good question, Gary. And s- since the winter spans the end of the year, we're talking winter of twenty-five, twenty-six, I assume.
Yeah, and, and you know, around the end of twenty twenty-five, um, we've got a twenty-four, twenty-five month schedule roughly, obviously based on the time we're starting. Some of it's going to just depend on some of those procurements of those, you know, the precast and how, how much of a winner we have this year that will potentially allow us to get um, a little bit ahead of that curve, so.
Other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. We feel like this project's off to a real, really good start, so we're real positive on it.
Well, thanks so much.
So are we in a position to approve, approve bid packet one for the jail law enforcement center? So I'd like to make that motion.
One second.
Discussion?
Thanks for all the hard work that's gotten us here. I, I am, the countless hours is uh, yeah, the only way we've gotten here. Thank you, Andy.
Thanks, Andy and Travis.
Yep.
Thank you.
And everybody on screen.
Alright, any other questions, comments? Alright, so this is, um, there's been a motion and a second to approve bid packet number one. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Dick.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Um, yes, if someone could get me a, a copy of the bid packet, it can just be a PDF emailed to me. Uh, just so that I have it when the state auditors come.
I can do that, Carrie.
Okay, and then Karen, I'll follow up with the actual GMP amendment paperwork um, for signature too.
Sounds good, thanks.
Anything else on construction?
Alright.
Yeah, it was clear that October third at eleven thirty.
Yep. Alright.
Keep the agenda light that day.
That's right, oh dear.
Yeah, alright. Then we can move on to the twenty twenty-four budget and Dan Berniston, the library director for Millian is here to answer any questions people have. About uh, the library budget. Um, I spent quite a few hours going through um, the uh, provisional budget and uh, and you know, really the th- thank you to every department head who worked so incredibly hard um, to trim it down. Um, it's still a, a little overwhelming. Higher, higher than we would like to see, but um, I, you know, I, I think now would be the time to talk about any changes that need to be made before the final um, uh, vote, which will happen um, the last Tuesday of the month. So this is probably our last chance as a group to make any changes um, to the proposed budget beyond what we've already voted on.
My question is, is what non-mandated services are we providing? That are already in the budget?
Correct.
Um, Lewis and Clark Mental Health, okay, go to senior meals. Four H.
That fall under the fair.
That's separate.
Fair, yeah, it's fair. Labelled as fair and.
Yeah, I didn't have that either on my, sorry.
Which that money goes to the upkeep of the buildings that we own, so. And teen court, teen court.
Yep, yeah.
And, and all of those, did we uh, did we include them in our proposed budget at a hundred percent of their request?
No.
No, right? I didn't, I didn't think so.
No, so teen court requested twelve thousand and we allocated them the same that they had last year, which was seven thousand.
Seven thousand.
Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, I believe requested something like seven or eight percent increase. And I had kind of budgeted three.
That's right, same as the, the cost of living increase we give employees, okay?
Yeah, and I, I think in years past, what we've talked about is that um, teen court and Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health actually save us money.
We hope.
Yeah, definitely diversion programs.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Any, any, anytime we're able to divert people out of the criminal justice system in a way that will keep them out long term is a good deal. And I, I know Alexis was always very um, certain um, that these would in the long run save us, save us money.
Yep, and so both of those is every, alright, everybody comfortable with the proposed budget levels that we had for those? So that's on, that sounds good.
Now clarify, teen court, is that in at seven K for?
Seven.
Yes.
And then do, do you have the number for the Lewis and Clark? I've, I've got the budget here, but take a little search and round.
Twenty-six, four, thirty-six.
Uh, that was the request.
And that was more like a seven or eight percent increase, but I had budgeted for a three percent and I don't have the number right on.
I can grab it.
Seven point four percent is what they asked for.
Actually, I might, if I go back here, I might have it on my.
But I, I, I'm comfortable with a, a three percent increase. Um, uh, you know, inflation is so um, extraordinary right now. I mean, it's more like it was in the late seventies again.
Yeah, I've got a, I've got a worksheet going here. I, I, you know, just to follow up on some of our previous conversations, I, I apologize that, you know, this is, this is my first rodeo. So I was thinking about this. I'm like, this is my first time through the process and I know when we were talking about that provisional budget. Um, at that point, I was kind of learning the ropes there and thinking we were going to revisit these a whole bunch. So I think uh, certainly um, at least coming through and uh, and taking some more care to, to, you know, if we're asking our department heads to make a ten percent cut on what their requested amount is, coming in with a hundred percent of the requested amounts for, for any of these is, is something we need to look at really hard. So I, I went through and I've got it broken down to the approximate dollar cost per year for someone with a two hundred thousand dollar uh, property to, so that I can kind of frame this a little bit better for myself, so. Yeah, so uh, so yeah, if we have that um.
So it's a twenty thousand, six fifty-four, right, Carrie? That is budgeted for twenty twenty-four, the mental health.
Twenty thousand?
Six fifty-four.
Six fifty-four.
And then you add in the, I'm just adding in the drug abuse real quick here and kind of doing the math. So twenty-five thousand, two forty, would be the total. Um, and that, that is the three percent increase.
Okay. Alright. And then the uh, the fair and senior meals, did we come in with their requested amounts or did we?
The senior meals I did, yes. Um, the fair, I did the eighty-two fifty that we paid last year.
Okay, that's right. That was not the requested amount, but that was the amount that.
The senior meals, um, typically what they do is they figure how many meals that they, they serve. It kind of goes on a supply and demand. And so some years it might be down and some years it might be up just a little bit. It's generally in the same range. Um, but it's based on how many people they have that are getting those meals.
Okay.
Right now, it's kind of close to the average, I think. Though I, I deliver meals on wheels. And uh, so I stop in the, where the main dining hall is out at the odd fellows. It seems to me like there's actually a dozen to fifteen or so, which is kind of a long-term average. It seemed to me, but just, just by casual observation, I think that right now it's a kind of a moderate u- usage, so. I, I deliver about once a month, it seems like, when we come on through one there, one or two months, so. But it's kind of right in the middle right now.
And so I think uh, you know, there were, there were a few that were, well, I guess I, I think there was just one that is not on this current funded list. They got thrown out there a couple of times, that the food pantry. I think Dave brought that one up a couple of times. Um, so I kind of thought that based on what, what we've got right now, I mean, I guess what I'm looking at in front of me is what was in the proposed budget. And so that's fifty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars is the cost of these mandated pro, or non-mandated programs that we have in the proposed budget. Um, that's out of an initial request of a hundred and fourteen thousand, a hundred and four uh, from all the non-mandated together. Um, our opt-out, uh, you know, I think when I mentioned it's my first rodeo, I think that coming around again, you know, that, that opt-out, the six hundred thousand dollar opt-out um, on a, someone that owns a two hundred thousand dollar house, uh, that's coming out to about, I think like eighty, eighty to ninety dollars a year is what that's costing them on their uh, on their property taxes. So um, this as a portion of that is about uh, seven fifty. If we, if we, what we've got in the proposed budget, when we were discussing that um, that opt-out number, um, that was kind of what I was going on was making sure we had adequate cash, adequate cash reserves after um, you know, after we got down to the bottom line there. Um, and uh, you know, to me, that makes sense. I think that I, thinking through this now, you know, framing these numbers, a hundred Thinking through this now, you know, framing these numbers, a hundred and fourteen thousand versus the whole budget, you know, I think that I would have probably asked actually. Would have advocated for possibly a slightly higher, uh, slightly higher opt-out, you know, I think that. You know, at, at an additional fifteen dollars per year for, for a two hundred thou, family with a two hundred thousand dollar house, we could have funded all of these at the amount they're requesting. I think that after the difficult budget chut, cuts that we asked all of our department heads to do, I don't think that would be appropriate. I think that we should give something less than that, so. In my mind, I think that the proposed budget that we've been working with so far, uh, I'm comfortable with, but I think that if we, uh, if we wanted to revisit this and look at whether we should. Decrease, um, you know, decrease the amount to the libraries, potentially add some to the food pantry budget, you know, those are all. Conversations that I feel pretty comfortable about, but in my mind, the, uh, you know, we're looking at. Less than, well, right about a dollar is what funding those libraries is going to cost, um, everybody. Who's got a, every family with a two hundred thousand dollar house, they're going to be paying about a dollar a year, uh, to, uh. To maintain that funding and I think that that, that dollar a year is, is worth it, that's less than a penny a day, so. But.
Any proposed changes?
So, right now, we're seeing teen court, Lewis and Clark. Fair, senior meals. And the, just the Vermillion Library?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm considering the three, yeah, the Vermillion, Wakanda and Beersford, at, at the amounts they're requesting and you know, if we.
Are they in there now?
Yes, yep.
Okay, so and then the others, we have nothing.
That's right.
So we have nothing for food pantry. Nothing for Salvation Army, which I can attest to, they help a lot with housing.
Yeah, that's really ten, ten people, I mean, I've heard from people in that office that, that the requests have really gone up.
They, they pay a lot of people security classes.
Yep.
Yeah, they have actually also run out of money.
Yep.
And I, I, you know, they'd sent out an appeal for donations and. I mean Salvation Army was at zero. A few weeks ago.
And then Main Street Center. We have nothing.
I believe we've.
Yeah, and that's just the Dakota Senior Meals section, so that just goes to the meals.
Has a separate request.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then there's senior transportation.
And that is a new one that we've never funded before.
Right. I just have a hard time of choosing some of these over others.
I hear you on that.
Here, it's a dollar a day, but if we add them all in, it adds up, and how do we, how do we make that decision? You know, we choose, you know, library services. When the USD library, this is only temporary, USD library is open to the general public and their computer lab also is open to the general public. So those services are available to everyone.
Well, they're available at the Vermillion Public Library too.
Yes. Yes, they are. And I struggle with putting that above food and housing assistance. And senior transportation to get seniors to the senior meals. Main Street Center for Socialization, which is a huge.
So, when I, I whipped myself up a little spreadsheet here and I could say, if we funded it eighty percent. And we threw in food pantry, Salvation Army and senior transportation. Um, if we put all, all three of those on there, we're talking about, uh, eight dollars and eighty, and sixty-one cents a year. Uh, on a family with a two hundred thousand dollar houses, our property taxes, that's what they're gonna, that's what they're gonna pay to throw all those in at an eighty percent funding. The total for non-mandate is going to come up to sixty-two thousand, eighty-three. And, uh, and I, I think that your reasoning is really sound, you know, and if we wanted to break that out, but I think that throwing it eighty percent or seventy-five percent, I think that. Funding it, you know, making more of a cut than the cut that all of our department heads were willing to come in. They all came in, they all cut stuff that was really important out of their budgets, so more than ten percent cut to the requested amount seems. Quite fair to me, you know, we could even say, you know, if, if that's, that sounds still a bit steep, we could say, you know, seventy-five percent or, you know. Or lower, but then at least we'd be putting something into these critically important programs and I, I do think that. You know, upon review and going back through and reading the cases that everybody made and their, their materials, uh, which I apologize for not having carefully reviewed when they were initially presented to us. Um, in the summer, uh, but, but looking through those, I, I think. That, that, that seems like a really worthwhile investment to me.
And, and I totally agree with that statement in a little year. But we've got. The jail project, we have this project. Current courthouse, and from my understanding, I knew at this too, but this is kind of the worst situation we've been in and. Some people's. Memories, so that's what my concern is. It's mandated versus non-mandated, and I personally spoke with seventy-five percent of the department. About this situation, because I struggle with this, I struggle deeply with this. And. I had numerous comments, none of them positive. Slapping the face. Wrote some of them down. It's going to cause a moral decline because, you know. They. Tough, tough pill to swallow. You know, how can we justify not delivering a meal to the shut-ins? We did the reduced cola forum, so, you know, it, it's a trickle-down effect on this, because. They do our jobs and, you know, we have, you know, public safety. We have, you know, law enforcement, state attorney's office, we have veteran services that affects veterans in our county, you know, all these, all these fundings do, and, um. Jeff, you were at the thing the other day when the guy spoke about the only way to, to, to save money is, is, um, money in, money out.
Yeah.
That's how we balance budget.
Yeah.
This is money out.
Yeah.
And, uh.
And I.
Totally agree, teen court, little behavioral health, those items save, save us money, those are non-mandated things that save the county money.
So I, I, I entirely agree, you know, and I, and I think, you know. We, uh, we, we have to balance the, balance the books and so we have to be thinking about money coming in and money going out. Um, I think that, what, what I needed to do between last week's meeting and this week's meeting is, is frame this as a portion of the total budget, so. When I was looking back to the numbers at the beginning of the year, I think that we, am I right, Carrie, we're something like nine hundred ninety, you know, we, we've, we've made major cuts, like nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars. Of cuts, um, from last year, so, um, what we're talking about here is, is a, a small portion of that total amount. Um, that we are, that we've tightened our belts on, and I think that the real place, um, you know, I, I agree, spending money willy-nilly is no way to run a household, there's no way to run a county. Um, but I don't think we do that, and I, I think you'd be hard pressed to find anybody in the county that says we spend money willy-nilly, and I think that anybody looking at these. Um, these requests, I think would, you know, especially if they're looking at them as a portion of the total budget, as a portion of the total levy. I mean, my property taxes on my house are a heck of a lot more than eight dollars and sixty-one cents a year, you know, that is a, that is a. Barely noticeable portion of my total, uh, property tax bill, and I think that the real, the real problem here. Is a state-level problem and we're all going up to talk to our legislators tomorrow in Two Falls about how they need to help us solve that problem. Um, there's an additional seventy thousand dollars that I think we should definitely receive, uh, uh, as a larger portion of the alcohol, uh, taxes that are collected, so. We right now are getting twenty-five percent of the, uh, the alcohol sales taxes are, are sent back to us from the state, we should be getting fifty percent. We pay for the jails, we pay for, uh, dispatchs to go out to car crashes, we pay for the domestic violence issues that come from, from that, you know, and there's. All sorts of issues like that in the funding model that the state gives us, and when we are capped at. Not the actual cost of living increase, not the actual inflationary increase, I mean, three, it's something like, Carrie, what's the, uh, what's the, the state's? Uh, CPI for this, this budget, is it three point three percent? Our building materials, our road materials, our vehicle costs, those things are all way beyond. Three percent inflation for the last several years, and so the problem is that we are not allowed to keep up with. The actual cost of, of, of inflation, of the things we need to pay for using our regular property tax levy. I think if we didn't have an opt-out on the table here, um, we would be just saying, well, you know, it fits within our property tax levy, we have to do this opt-out. Because we are constantly going to be falling farther and farther behind of the rate of inflation, and then that to me is the. Many hundreds of thousands of dollar or millions of dollar, um, issue and, and not, um, this, you know, sixty-two thousand dollar question of. Um, do we need to fund these vitally important services, um, and, and are those inappropriate part of our, of our, our budget, so?
I don't feel anything about it's inappropriate. You know, with, with all the things about the taxes and liquor things, and, you know, people tend to believe. In what can be instead of what is, and that's a long-term thing that we, role we need to work on. But. We tighten our belt. And we ask everybody to tighten their belt and. Daniel, is the library in peril? No, and this is a short tube, short.
Budgets approved for next year from the city, the ordinance is having its first second readings of seven hundred. There are six hundred and seventy, six hundred and eighty thousand. It's in the city budget, yes.
And this is just a one-year decision to get us through some rough times, I mean, that's. That's, that's my opinion, you know, because, you know, last time you guys spoke highly of the library, everything you said was true and. Their integrity, their services, nothing is in, in question in my mind, they do a wonderful job, it's just, we have a job too. To provide. You know, our mandated services in a safe manner.
Yeah. Well, I. Yeah, I think. You're not wrong. I think to, to me, what, what it came down to the end is, um, what we're talking about for the library budget is one dollar a year. For, for a normal family in our county, and I think that that one dollar a year i- is worth it, but.
Comes down to me is, why did we choose them over food?
Well, and, and that's why I think we should throw in food and housing for an additional one dollar a year.
You, you can't just keep throwing money in because, because we opted out of the issue, I mean, we still have an issue. We had to opt-out and charge the taxpayers more money. And now all of a sudden we got more money, well, we're going to start spending it, it's, it's no different than.
Not.
College kid who gets his financial aid the beginning of the year, he just, so don't know how to manage it, we have to cut this stuff. Because it's not sustainable to go, well, it's only a dollar, well, it's a dollar here and it's a dollar there, they eventually add up to a lot of money.
They add up to about eighty-nine dollars.
And there's no way we're, we're going to end up opting out again next year. And people are going to go, why do you keep opting out, and then when you get our opt-out money, you spend it on non-mandated stuff, after you've already cut the department heads. And that stuff that they cut, they didn't cut it, they kicked it down the road, that stuff's going to come due in a year or two.
Yep, so the reason that I think that that accurate is, i- it doesn't really land, is that. We had a discussion of this provisional budget. And these items were in there when we were determining what that opt-out is, so we didn't say, let's take six hundred thousand dollars and then we'll go figure out what we're going to spend it on. We had a, we had a debates, we had a meeting, we talked about it, people can go and look it up, and in that meeting, these library items were in there. We're talking about some additional ones that I, 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 you know, Dave Teese's arguments landed with me, the food pantry, Salvation Army, they are meeting and senior transportation, those things are. Are particularly important right now, and when I look at those as a portion of the total budget, and really the impact is going to be on our, our cash reserves at the end of the year. You know, are we at, at sixteen point three percent or are we at sixteen point one eight percent if we added those in? But we could also not, and we could just go with what, with the budget that we used to, uh, to set that opt-out, but we set that opt-out based on. Asking our department heads what they could do, they came back, these library funding was in the budget at that time, and I'm, I'm now entertaining the idea, you know. It, it makes more sense to not give them a hundred percent, if we, if we told the department heads that they needed to come up with a cut, then I think that we should also cut the amounts that we're giving to the library, so I'm saying. You know, we should give less than that, or maybe we give fifty percent, and then we give fifty percent of what's asked for from the food pantry, the Salvation Army, but I don't think it's accurate to say. We asked the county for a big pile of money and then we sat around trying to decide what we're going to spend it on, we looked at our budget, this was included in there because we felt it was important enough to fund last year. And that's how we came up with that opt-out number, that, that number came after we asked for the department heads to make their cuts and after this was already in the budget.
Uh, you're not understanding that how that process worked then.
Okay.
Because when we sat here, and I said, well, the department heads are going to have to cut ten percent, that's where we got to start. And we're probably going to have to do a six hundred thousand dollar opt-out, but everything in the budget. As far as the non-mandated, everything in there was still on the table and everybody agreed to that. That doesn't mean we did the opt-out and went, okay, now we're going to fund whatever's on the budget, that's not what that discussion was.
We, we talked about that, we talked about teen court staying in, we talked about Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health stalling in. Clyde County Fair, senior meals, meals staying in, and then the library funding was in there, well, is that, at that time, wasn't it, but we had already.
It was in there, nothing was approved and everything was still on the table, everything's still on the table until the twenty-ninth.
It is, but when we were determining, because we had to determine by July fifteenth or whatever date it was, what that opt-out was, we had a good idea of what we were all working with, like that was.
Yeah, but that, it's, and it's fine, Jeffrey, we're not going to change each other's mind on this.
That's probably.
I understand that.
That's probably true, yeah.
All I'm saying is, I don't know how you can ask the public to pony up more money. And then go and just spend it discretionarily on something that is not mandated, that we are not supposed to be handling. Now, we justify mental health, teen court, because we're hoping it alleviates pressure on our jail. Now, we can cut that, we're building a new jail, we can handle them now, but I don't think that's prudent. And Dakota Senior Meals, I mean, we cut a big chunk out of the Main Street Center, but Dakota Senior Meals, we felt were very. They were, you know, they were going to be severely impacted, Daniel's already said, the library is in good shape. Whether we give them the money or not. We have to look after our tax dollars prudently. I don't think just. Picking one or the other, because we could, we could have Daniel in here, we could have the Conservation District in here, we could have all those non-mandated, that was a total of a hundred and sixty thousand dollars two years ago. They could all sit in here and make the same argument for their, what they believe in. But we have to be very prudent with these dollars, I mean, it's a dollar this year, but it's another dollar next year, it adds up. And we are not getting ahead, and this is the farthest behind we've ever been since I've been on the board.
Yeah.
And this will be my eleventh budget.
Yeah.
Well, Nick?
I think a little clarification, as I recall, when we were setting the mandate amount, six hundred thousand dollars came up. In the final hour, uh, we were talking about zero opt-out, two fifty opt-out. Five hundred opt-out or seven fifty opt-out, and in looking at the numbers, we. We thought it would be prudent to land on six hundred. Because we were doing our best to keep the budget in line, but we also. Were, at least I was, was acutely aware of. If, uh, we end up at the end of the budget year and we've run out of money before we run out of services. There aren't a lot of options to fix that.
I believe that comes out of our pockets, I think if we spent, uh, county money without budgeting it, uh, that is the personal responsibility of the commissioners, so.
I don't know that we've, I don't know if anybody's done that other than Bennett County. A few years, and the other part is, is that we keep talking about mandated versus non-mandated funds. I'd like to kick in a, a third option is that, uh, that we have mandated funds and we also have. Uh, whether you want to call it. Essential or critical services that, that, uh, that are on this list, and that would be like food pantry. And that would be like the libraries, and it would be. Main Street Center, which is the main way we serve our senior citizens. That, uh, I think that there's a, there are services that we should be funding and we ought to be funding. And we should only cut under the most extreme circumstances that are either essential or critical. Which is more than mandated, but it's less than, than, uh. What we could fund when we're in great shape. Sure. It's up to me, Ken. Gotta ask that.
I, I don't wanna make this conversation any more complex. And there was a year you didn't give us any money. And the library board discussed it. We're not looking for a reason not to serve county residents. We want to serve them. I think the only point we like to make is, you know, it's the, the public library's been getting the same amount of money for years. We've never asked for an increase. Every time it comes up, like, let's ask the county for money. It's always been, the county's already got a tight enough budget and enough responsibilities. We're not gonna get that money. We want to help county residents, but we also wanna understand, the county only has so much money to go around. There, there's almost another category involved here because the food pantry, and I don't wanna debate the worthiness of any of those organizations, because you sound very aware, they're all important. Um, the food pantry, a lot of these are not profit organizations. Um, the, does, well, most often mostly by volunteers at the front rates. Um, it's not a mandated expense, but a public library is an authorized expense under state law, the type fourteen section two for a city or county to run. And there's three ways that state law outlines that it's set up. The county runs its own library. It's a part of your own budget. It partners with another local government entity and has a cost sharing agreement, which I guess would be comparable to what happens with like nine one one and those types of things. Where the city and county share those expenses. Um, or the third option is the, the, if there's not a library within the service area, they contract or make an agreement with another area that has a library to provide their services. And that's what's happening in this instance. Uh, the city is what we're organized on and is bearing the bulk of the cost. Uh, we don't have a formal agreement. We're not a department under the county, but we've always done everything we can to work with you guys. You know, ultimately, I don't make this decision either. Based on what you guys say, I report back to the library board and they decide what happens next. And they may well say, um, you know, we can do without this. They may well say that um, a library needs funding in order to operate and we should start charging county residents to take some of that. I can't say. I can say when we talked about it last time, board members were very understanding. But there is that designation there where, you know, we as a library is set up as a tax funded public service, maybe not mandated or mandatory. But it's also something different. We're open seven days a week, almost every day of the year. Uh, we don't just attack one specific problem. Uh, we partner with many of these groups and organizations. The food pantry gives us money to, uh, food to distribute to the kids after school. So we work with them to make them work. When people are looking for where to get or find these services, you know, they come to the library and pick up those pamphlets and find out where those services are and get to them. You know, we're almost like a central point that connects all those services together, which puts us in a little bit of a if the money's not there, that doesn't really help. But then we are in a slightly different categories, mandated versus non mandated. You know, we are a tax funded public service as opposed to a nonprofit organization that functions in a good way, I guess. Would be the only point I'm thinking. Um, as a county or a city, you know, you have the option to, they can choose quality of life. Expenses for your residents that are worth paying. And so, you know, si- libraries, parks and other things like that. Uh, there are other expenses in your budget that are not mandated, but are essential to supporting those services. I T and human resources, they're not mandated expenses, but they're in your budget. Um, and you guys ultimately decide. Um, I don't know if I can give you any information or answer any more questions. Uh, I can only really say, I'm not looking for any excuse not to serve the county residents that live outside the city. Um, I wanna report back to the board um, and say, you know, we wanna do everything we can to work together, work with the commissioners. Uh, my bigger concern long term, um, is sometimes when these things drop out of the budget, it's hard to get them back in again. Um, you know, uh, uh, obviously, a year or two at this level of funding, um, I would expect the library board would feel like they would last time. It's manageable. But if that money disappears and doesn't come back again, it's not something that we can just provide free services. Cause then unlike the food pantry, when they don't get money, it just means they didn't raise that many funds and they haven't have so many resources. For us, we're asking the city of Vermillion residents to cover the cost of county residents getting library services through the taxes they're paying. And they're probably not gonna be happy about that, because in their mind, it would be like, why aren't they paying that fair share? And that's where we're in a slightly different situation. I don't know if any of that helps.
City residents and also county residents.
Absolutely.
What other avenues have you guys done for funding?
I mean, we have a Friends of the Library, Library Foundation, Friends of the Library holds a monthly book sale at my sponsors. Most of, a lot of the supplies, the presenters for the summer reading program. Um, every year, for as long as I've been there, between the Friends and Foundation, they've probably put in fifteen to thirty thousand dollars into the library for the, the other stuff.
Those are the other two avenues, basically.
Grants that come from time to time, the American Library Association. I mean, we're always looking for alternative funding sources.
Other civic places like Civic Council Eagles.
We've had some grants from them in the past. The Vermillion Community Foundation has given us some grant. I mean, yeah. If the opportunities come up when we get those notices, if it fits with a program or service we offer, we have put in an application and got funds for those things. Yeah.
And I don't think anybody sitting up here has said this is a long term solution.
Oh.
No. No, it's just, it's just happened since we've had to start opting out. I mean.
All right, well.
I do have one question for Daniel. Since I don't live in the city and I'd be a county resident, if I came in and didn't wanna get a library card, what wouldn't I be able to do?
A library card right now gives you the ability to check items out and leave the building with them. Um, other than that.
Other than that, every service is still available.
And digital services, yeah. So I think you need a library card to sign up for some of the digital services. Like if you wanna borrow ebooks or use creative.
Yeah, I guess that's true. There are physical items you take out of the building, but you do check them out for a limited, so um, Overdrive that has the downloadable audio books and ebooks. Uh, Freeable Music, uh, Universal Class is a digital resource that provides like continuing education. If people wanna update their skills on technology, Word, Office, those types of things, you need a library card to log in to them. Um, anything that's like checked out or um, access through some sort of authentication. So like, when we subscribe to a service like Universal Class, it's specifically in their agreement that we're only providing it to people of a service area. And the only way we can do that is by assigning them a library card so they have the login. So those would be the two criteria. Um, if you wanted to use a computer, you can get a guest notes. Um, if you wanna come to a program, you know, we don't have registration for most of our programs. And if there's a component like, we need to know how many supplies to order, or there's limited space, um, you just show up.
Other questions or comments? So it, 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 it sounds like most of us have developed some opinions, but anyone like to make a motion?
I would.
I was just gonna say, what would the motion be on? Cause we're not accepting the budget today.
Right, right.
Is this to, to, to determine the amounts of non mandated funding? Is that what?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I think what we need, what Carrie needs in order to come up with a final number um, and a final levy that we can actually vote on next week is that she needs some certainty on what we wish to include and not include. And so I think it'd be appropriate actually at this point um, to vote on um, uh, you know, things that should be either included or not included in the final draft of the budget. So Jeffrey, you were gonna.
Well, so I was going to, I was gonna move that of the non mandated, mandated programs uh, on the list we've been considering, which is teen court, food pantry, Salvation Army, Wakanda Ministerial Association, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, Vermillion Library, Wakanda Library, Beersford Library, Historical Society, Austin Whitmore House, W H Over Museum, Clay County Fair, Senior Meals, Senior Transportation, and the Main Street Center. So of that list, I would move that we fund teen court at seven thousand dollars. That we fund the food pantry at five thousand six hundred twenty five dollars. That we fund Salvation Army at one thousand three hundred dollars. That we fund Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health at twenty five thousand two hundred forty dollars. That we fund the Vermillion Public Library at three thousand dollars. That we fund the Wakanda Library at one thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars. That we fund the Beersford Library at one thousand one hundred twenty five dollars. That we fund uh, the Clay County Fair or four H at eight thousand two hundred fifty dollars. That we fund uh, Senior Meals at five thousand seven hundred ninety three dollars. And that we fund Senior Transportation at one thousand eight hundred seventy five dollars. And so for clarity, that is teen court, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, play uh, Clay County Fair, four H and Senior Meals at the amounts that we had discussed previously at our provisional budget hearing. So um, and then the other, other ones, um, that's at seventy five percent of the amount that they had requested. So.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? I, I've been uh, listening, um, something maybe I, I don't always do really well, but I've been listening and um, you know, as I, as I think about what's gone on with the Salvation Army this year. Um, and the fact that uh, they ran out of money. Um, so they had zero money available to house people who um, were newly homeless. Um, and I, you know, for all the reasons we've talked about, I mean, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, Teen Court, they, they, in the long run, they save us money. Um, everyone heard more than they wanted to hear last week about how um, how I view libraries as uh, essential to a democratic society. Um, and I, you know, I, I'll admit that I hadn't thought about transportation as an essential service. But I, you know, I can certainly see it that way. The fact that this is such a small amount of money per household um, for creating a kind of quality of life um, that we would like to guarantee to the least of our citizens. Um, I, yeah, I, I, I'll support, I'll support this motion.
What's the total come up to, Jeff?
So the total for those programs that I just listed is uh, sixty one thousand ninety six dollars. That, that's including, you know, not just the ones that are funded at seventy five percent, but all those ones that we had discussed in the previous meeting, so. About, about ten percent of our opt out.
That's twice the amount that we just said we couldn't afford to spend. Our suppression system in the attic, because we, that's not mandated.
Well, and I, I think that in the discussion of the fire suppression system, we didn't determine that it wasn't going to be a long term, good use of county funds.
This is not a long term either.
But we gotta talk about the other non mandated one that we fund, the park with the land. I mean, are we throwing that on the table too then? I mean, that's coming out of county taxpayers' pockets. But if we're gonna, I don't know how we add anything back in. I just, it's just mind boggling how we can opt out, be in the financial situation we are, and then start adding things back in.
And we just quickly went from fifty four thousand to sixty five thousand.
Yeah, we're going way in the wrong direction, but that's.
Well, I mean, the, the, the difference there is so cutting library funding and then adding in funding for these additional food pantry, Salvation Army and Senior Transportation. That's what got us from fifty four up to, to sixty one, so. The, the impact is gonna be at the end of the year, uh, a difference in, in our cash reserves.
Which we lose one bridge and we're broke.
We're gonna need that reserves.
I mean, if, if we really, if the commission really feels that we can't afford this at, you know, so, so I think that we all are in agreement on teen court, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, four H and Senior Meals. Is that right? We don't have any. I, I think that the numbers that I threw out there are the numbers that we all had discussed and settled on previously. So we're, so assuming we're comfortable with those, we're, we're literally talking at approximately two dollars of most families' property taxes for the year. You know, we're talking about one dollar or two dollars of them or zero dollars. And to me, per year. So you know, this is, this is a third of a penny a day for an average household in Clay County is, is what's up for debate right now, uh, between a third of a penny or two thirds of a penny or, or zero. Now, I pay quite a bit more than one penny of property taxes a day personally, and everybody else does too. You know, my, my property taxes are considerably higher than that. They're much, about two thousand dollars a year is what I'm paying. So of my property taxes, which is what we're discussing right now, this, the, I, I, I do not think that fiscal irresponsibility is all right in, in any stretch of the imagination. But it is all a matter of scale and scope and, and, and you know, this, this is a very, very small part of our budget, which every member of the commission has expressed the importance of these programs. So the, when we consider the scale of where these fall in our budget and the importance of these, of these items, um, that's, that's where my reasoning is coming from. Certainly not from, we should, you know, these, anybody who comes in the door and asks us for money for a good idea, we should give it to them. I mean, I, I think that you, we have to say, how much are you asking for? How much is that out of the total budget? How much is the impact of that, since we've already set our opt out? You know, is that something that is a sustainable amount um, to change any of this? You know, I, I came into the, the last meeting thinking, we, we've, we've hashed this out. We've set our opt out. We're comfortable with the cash reserves at the end of the year. And so everything that was in the budget at that time, uh, I felt that we had spent time considering. The big change of, you know, of my mind between then and now is, is spending more time looking at each of these requests and thinking about each of these requests in terms of the, the total scope of the budget. So um, I was, I was fuzzy on what those numbers were. I didn't know if you're talking about an extra hundred dollars per household per year or two hundred dollars per household per year. How mu- how much of a, of, of a family's property taxes are we dealing with here? And what we're dealing with is between zero and two dollars of their property taxes for the year, for, for an average family in Clay County. So, so that's a lot of where, where I come down on this is not that either of you are making bad arguments. I mean, these are, these are things that we must be considering and are, are critical questions we need to ask ourselves every day as commissioners. But, but to me, the answer to this question is in, is in what is the actual cost.
But you can break every, every line item down that way. It only costs a dollar or only costs fifty cents. Look at it globally, on the whole, the whole scheme of things. Plus, we already under, there's understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Daniel. The library's not gonna go anywhere. The services that we all, that you and Betty brought up last week, that they were gonna miss out on, that they'd have to pay for, is not the case. They just can't check materials out. They still have access to computers. They still have access to the books.
Yep.
Everything that's in the library, the, the county is still going to have access to.
And, and to, to, you know, to be, to be perfectly frank, um, hearing that discussion, thinking about this, you know, hearing everybody else on the commission saying, talking about this as a short term, you know, this year decision and not a
Oh, it's gonna be next year too. We're gonna have the same discussion next year.
We said till winter twenty five, twenty six at least, right? Before anything gets any easier. So, you know, the, that, uh, this is the time for discussion. And if, uh, you know, i- if it comes down to it, that the, that the libraries can't be funded, I, I would still advocate that these other, the food pantry, Salvation Army and Senior Transportation, uh, I think are, you know, that would be approximately using the amount of money that we had in the proposed budget for the libraries. If we wanted to reallocate to, to those other programs, because they're in more dire straits. I do think that, um, you know, inflation uh, and its impact on families and their ability to put food on the table and and its impact on families and their ability to put food on the table and pay their rent is impacting these other programs more than it's impacting the library right now. And so if, if the reality is, is these programs aren't going to be able to provide services unless we fund them this year, and the library is gonna still be able to provide services, you know, I, 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 I'm not, uh, I don't wanna shut that discussion down. I think that that's a valid discussion, so.
Well, I don't know how we add anything back in, but then according to the city council's minutes, the food pantry somehow turned a profit last year.
I don't understand how a nonprofit turns profit.
Well, they make, I mean.
I think that, I think that my, I, cause, yeah, I, I saw that as well and was puzzled a bit. I think that that was, uh, I think someone misspoke and what they were pointing to is that the organization retains cash reserves at the end of the year as probably every nonprofit organization should do for financial.
That was more than the year before, so they're obviously, and they added services, and they still retain more money. That was part of that discussion.
Okay.
I mean, their staff, staff wages went to like eighty-six thousand versus forty-three the year before.
That's not a profit. Um, you know, ca- every, every nonprofit, if they're wise, has cash reserves. And I, I've sat on the board of more than a dozen nonprofits, and if they don't have cash reserves, they're not, they're not running it right. So I, you know, I, I don't think that's.
But if they're sitting there with cash reserves, they're obviously not going away. The services are gonna be there. I mean, they're actually, they're sitting on more money than they had the year before, which means they're obvi- obviously running the operation correctly. So I mean, that service.
And I believe they're providing vastly more services. And my understanding is that the last year or two, like the amount of families that are being fed, the, and the amount of quantity of food going out the door is, is much, much more. So some of that might be a function of just a cat, shooting for a cash reserve of this percentage. I mean, I haven't looked at it closely, so I don't know. You know, that would, could be an increase in a dollar amount from that too, but.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's fair to say that, that pressure on the Salvation Army and the food pantry in particular have been extraordinary over the last few years since COVID. And, um, you know, watching the Salvation Army, which didn't, didn't have sufficient reserves, completely run out of money was, for me personally, a real, a real shock. And if, uh, you know, it, it, I, I think Dick's analysis of like there, you know, there are items that are non-mandated but critical. You know, the idea that anybody in this county would go hungry or not have a place to sleep, um, is just unacceptable to me.
Those are true statements. We spend fifty, sixty, thirty, that whatever we, we agree on to spend here. We don't know what's gonna happen next year. We don't have that luxury of, of reserves which we should have. You know, that, you know, what if something happens? We lose a bridge, we lose something major. I mean, we can't predict that. If we were flush with cash, you know, and had reserves, you know, these, it'd be a simple, simple answer, but you know, it's, it's down to fiscal responsibility is, we don't know what's gonna happen in the next couple of years. Hopefully, as the economy turns around and materials and stuff and gets down, and when this is done and over, we're sitting pretty, but we can't predict that.
Yeah, and I, I think though.
Tighten our belt for two years, along with everyone else.
And I, I, I think we have tightened our belts. Um, and the budget that Carrie has presented to us actually includes all but, um, what, three? Um, three of these organizations. And I think what Jeffrey's, and, and maybe, maybe you wanna, you know, one way of restating the motion, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we are taking the budget that Carrie presented to us with the cash reserves that at the end are sixteen point something percent. And at the end of the year, and, uh, we are simply adding in the food pantry and the Salvation Army and, uh, Senior, Senior Transportation.
And decreasing the, the funding to the libraries to seventy-five percent of the requested amounts instead of one hundred percent.
And so, uh, you know, I, I spent hours and hours on this budget over the past week, and it, it looks acceptable. It's not the budget we'd all choose. I, I think we are unanimous in that. This is not a comfortable budget. This is a painful budget. I think department heads, um, have really cut this budget to the bone. But I, I do think, um, that the very small amount of money that it would take to add these three critical services, um, is, is, is not, it's not substantial. Um, it's a very, very small amount per household. And it, it's hard for me to believe that most voters would not say, um, that no, we, we should not leave anybody without something to eat or a place to live in, in this county.
But a lot of the voters say we shouldn't be paying for anything that's not mandated. They're like, I don't want my tax dollars going to anything that you don't have to pay for. And they're really the ones who have been hit the hardest the last two years is the tax, the property tax owners.
Well, I think that the ones who are the hit the hardest are the renters. They pay the highest levy, so.
Um, I'd have to disagree.
I don't know a landlord in the county that doesn't pass the cost of their property taxes onto their renters in the form of an additional cost in their rent. I don't know a single landlord that's gonna pay it out of their pocket, right? You, 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 you pay the cost of your property taxes out of your pocket? All right.
You can ask my renters.
All right.
I, I'm still renting three-bedroom houses for five hundred dollars a month because I think about people and their families.
Well, that's really good, Dave. I commend you for that. Yep. I commend you for that.
All right, so, um, anything to add that we haven't said before?
I, I guess I don't consider the per taxpayer, per, uh, house analysis that Jeffrey is, is, uh, presented is the, really the main way to compare this. The way we need to compare it is to this year's budget. And in this year's budget, we've got the projection is a couple billion at the end, I guess, cash reserves. But the real area to look at is, um, is a percentage of our commissioner's contingency budget, which is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And what we're doing is, that, that's what our cash, that's what, uh, we're comparing it to the nonprofits that's, where that, uh, and the cash reserve money, and what we should be comparing to. That's, uh, the stuff you would carry on over. And that's, actually, the contingency is just a small percentage of that carryover. So what we'd be spending is about half of our contingency budget. In other words, we're, uh, the budget that comes up, or the items that come up during the year that, uh, we could not foresee, that we can, uh, just, uh, uh, pull out of that contingency without moving money between budget items. Like, for instance, each year, uh, Rod, uh, this year, he, uh, moved, uh, money for buying certain equipment uh, that he thought he was gonna need at the beginning of the year. Well, that's not as critis- critical as some other deals that he came up with. Or things that ended up being more, uh, a better, a better, uh, use of the money. So we do that every year too, but really what we're doing here is spending about half of our, our contingency. In other words, half of our, our, uh, non-mandated, um, what, things that we come up with, uh, uh, expenses that we need to pay during the year. None of those are mandated necessarily, but there are things that we've got to, to pick up and, uh. So I guess what I'm looking at is we're spending about half of that.
So, but I think that, so are you considering the forty-six thousand two eighty-three that we're spending on the 4H, the Senior Meals, Teen Court, and Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health is coming out of that? Cause that's, that's forty-six thousand right there. The amount that we're considering for these other, the other programs is about twenty, so. Uh, do you, do you think it's appropriate to consider that full sixty thousand? Or I'm just wondering where, uh, because the one hundred and thirty thousand was in there as our contingency alongside eight thousand dollars to the libraries? And then we did not have anything budgeted for, uh, for Food Pantry, Salvation Army, and Senior Transportation. So those are about another ten that we're, that we're tacking on. So, so my take on it is we're talking about an additional, right now, we're talking about maybe an additional five to ten out of our contingency to make up that difference.
Which we normally spend the contingency every year anyway, on building maintenance that we don't know about. There's always something that pops up.
There's something, things that are coming along, and, uh, is, uh, is that correct?
Is that correct here, is it, Carrie?
Carrie, is this hundred and thirty contingencies that above the stuff that you just listed?
Yes.
Yeah.
It is, um, and I mean, Travis is right. We have, we have spent it all the last several years.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I, I think the contingency fund is, is the right, is the right number. And at the end of the year, where it would fall out financially would be in, um, the, um, uh, s- surplus at the end of the year, um, which of course we always count on, but some into the next year's budget. And then we leave, we leave some in, in cash, cash reserves. But I think that's, that's where it wa- it would fall out. And of course, that's a much bigger number. And, uh, what, what, it was like, oh, in, end of the year, projected surplus.
Cash balance on the December thirty.
Now, now I do think that, that messing with that cash balance at the end of the year is, is risky. I think that we should consider that dipping into our, you know, dipping into critical reserves that we should not do lightly. And I think that you are right, that we should be, if we're, if we're fiddling with stuff after the proposed budget that we had looked at before, I think that we need to be looking at any increased expenditures anywhere as coming out of that contingency. But I, I think that it's a smaller portion than half of it.
As long as we're discussing that, I think it's worth noting too that the last several years, we have had budget supplements in addition to spending all of that contingency. So in effect, we are dipping into those reserves.
Do you know about what those have come to?
No, off the top of my head, I'd have to go back and look.
They weren't small numbers.
No, they really weren't.
Like fifty, sixty thousand every time we did them.
Yeah.
And we did it how many times a year?
Ones for sure.
Typically, we'll do one at the end of the year, but I know we've, last year or two, we've had some in the middle of the year even for different things. I'd have to go back and look. I can't remember off the top of my head.
So that's.
Two, I think, if I recall.
So that's an important one for next year, I think, is to make sure that we revisit that contingency amount and consider those. I mean, I think, I, again, I apologize, it's my first rodeo, but everybody's gotta have a first year as a commissioner if they're on the commission, so. Um, but I think that that seems to be, when we're looking at what that contingency should be, we should base it on what the empirical expenses are, so.
And see, that's what I'm thinking. You know, we had the provisional budget that we'd already set. And adding these in, you know, in my mind, is a, the, the correct way to look at it is dipping into that contingency.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because, uh, we're spending before the year even starts, money that, uh, that's the, that's the place you would normally dip into for un- unanticipated expenses.
And so that, that's kinda where, you know, where it puts me, where if we, if we determine that the Food Pantry, Salvation Army, Senior Transportation, or maybe just some set of those are more critically important to fund right now. I mean, I think that we are in an emergency funding framework here. We're really looking at only the things that need it the most should be on that list. So in my mind, you know, if we can not touch the contingency, we can redirect funding from, you know, the, the library line item that we had in the fun, in the, in the budget previously. You know, that's certainly something that I'm comfortable, uh, I, I, I would not have issue with that, I think. I think that, you know, you guys have made strong arguments for why those things are critically important, so.
I just don't know how we add more back in. I mean, the department heads didn't cut fluff. You know, that's the, the stuff that they cut, we're gonna end up paying for down the road, and it's gonna cost us more.
Yeah.
So I mean, really, if you're gonna start adding things back in or even giving it a, a less amount, we better throw everything back in then and start over. Because there's some things.
That's why I asked for this list.
Right. But the department heads knew what they could do without, right now. But it's gonna cost us more in two or three years to re, to, to buy what they were planning on doing right now.
I, I know there's, there's, um, there's delayed purchases and, and the, delayed expenditures that
Yep.
went into that ten percent cut in, in it, probably most of the offices, if not all.
And I would assume most of it's equipment that they cut. Well, somehow.
Drew would just sit here about, you know, organizing his stuff, and he cut out his software that would help him do that.
Right.
You know, and that's only two thousand dollars, but he doesn't have a huge budget. Two thousand dollars is a lot of money for him.
I thought we left that in there.
Yeah, I think we left that in.
I thought.
Yeah, I think we decided that was a good cost.
Decided yet. We discussed it.
We've only discussed it. I mean, that'll come at the end of them.
I think we wanted to leave that in.
Yeah.
When I prepared this latest one that I sent out to you guys, I did leave his software in there, but knowing that it could be, that they cut out later.
Yeah, I mean, that software's a, a long-term investment in, um, a function of the county that makes a real difference to citizens.
It's another one that could be a cost savings, you know, if we've got better retention of records and it keeps us out of trouble.
I mean.
There's a lot of equipment that got cut. Could have been cost savings.
Yeah.
And, and, and being able to cross-talk with other departments as well by using that same software, it just makes sense. I, I think that's gotta, I think that's gotta stay in there.
I wouldn't, uh, my, I would attend, entertain amendments to my, to my motion if anybody wants to offer ones, you know, I.
That Teen Court and Fair Senior Meals. Fair Senior Meals, yeah. I, I do think there's value to keeping a toe in the door for, uh, funding, funding, uh, some of these, these things. I think, uh, Daniel's correct in the point that, uh, you go to zero and then it's hard to get restarted. And I, I guess, I, I had made some similar cuts to the, to the requests, but left some of them in. And the ones that I had left in was, was, uh, Teen Court, I had left that in at nine K. And, uh, the Food Pantry at five. And, uh, each of the libraries I was going to just cut in half, just as a toe in the door. So it'd go from a total of eight thousand to four thousand.
Uh, if you would like to amend, I, I would be comfortable amending my motion to, uh, to drop the library funding amounts to uh, fifty percent of their requested amounts instead of seventy-five percent. Uh, you seconded me.
And then Food Pantry.
Uh, yeah, so the.
Five thousand?
So, uh, for the, yeah, yep, that's right. And Food Pantry at five thousand.
You know, each of those, the, the thought was to, uh, was to keep the toe in the door, but, uh, save a significant amount of money. And, uh, our total unmandated cost would be down in the less than one percent of our total budget.
And were, were you saying, uh, Teen Court increased to nine thousand or leave at seven thousand?
I was, I was thinking about, um, tennis, is, is Alexis used to tell us with, uh, Hammond, you're spinning, splitting the baby here. Yeah, that, that's exactly what I'd be doing.
All right. Yep.
It's in there now at seven thousand.
Yeah.
Would you be comfortable with leaving here?
Yeah, yeah.
So then basically what we have is, is a net of one thousand dollars. So your proposal would, um, give the libraries four thousand, give the Food Pantry five thousand. Um, so libraries would basic, so that gives us four thousand more in the budget. So basically, we, we would only be spending a thousand dollars more.
And you're saying.
Having the provisional budget.
And just to make sure I'm clear on that, so then Salvation Army and Senior Transportation proposing that those go to zero? And just to make sure I'm clear on that, so then Salvation Army and Senior Transportation proposing that those go to zero for this year?
Guess Dave knows the most about Salvation Army. Since they went to a zero this year, that would be a.
Well, I, I, I don't know anything about their budget. I just.
Yeah.
She obviously knows, Betty knows that they ran out of money.
Right.
I know they, they help a lot of people with deposits through Vermillion Housing.
Yes.
Vermillion Housing does not provide deposit money, but I think they have to seek out the sources for that.
Right. And, you know, my reasoning is, is that, uh, yeah, that we, we don't have an on-off switch between mandated and, uh, and, uh. Not mandated, fully. There are expenses within this list that I would, I would, uh, consider critical. Just because some jerk and, and, uh, there's a bunch of jerks that, yeah, and Pierre. Told us we had to spend our money on this particular stuff. Uh, where's local control in that?
That's the boat we're in.
Where is local control in that?
They only happen on election years.
Yeah, that's exactly right.
Yeah. So with that proposal, that amendment, um, we would, it would basically be twenty-three hundred dollars, um, net.
Increased over what?
The proposed budget.
Over the proposed, over, over the provisional budget.
We started with.
Be a twenty, twenty-three hundred dollar difference.
Twenty-three hundred out of our contingency. We can, we can decrease the contingency to, uh, one, twenty, seven, seventy, and we remain at where we were at with the proposed budget.
Taking out of the contingency doesn't help. We spend it every year. So you took it out of the left pocket and put it in the right one. I mean, and what stop, what stops from opening the door of all the other man, non-mandated ones that we, that we don't do? I mean, we were at a hundred and sixty thousand two years ago, non-mandated.
Yeah, I, I'd say about, uh, uh, fifty minutes discussions were that, for that once and goes. It's in the, in the, in the end, and we, uh, next year will be in the same boat. We'd be making the same discussion.
With more requests.
And if it takes two hours, so be it.
And so it seems to me that, you know, we, unless somebody has something new to say, um. We would need a formal motion by somebody to, um, appropriate fifty percent to the libraries, which is four thousand. Add five thousand to the food pantry and add thirteen hundred for the Salvation Army. And these would be additions to the provisional or changes to the provisional budget.
So we've already got a motion in a second on something.
Right, but this, obviously this.
So I, I moved and proposed and then Dick, was that a formal amendment to my motion?
Yeah.
Okay, and so then, uh, so then I think you can second that or somebody else, if they're willing to. May second that amended motion if they're comfortable with it. So I think you seconded my initial motion, so you're comfortable seconding the amended motion? Then I think we have a, an amended motion on the table. So.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, to be, be, be clear with us, yes, we're, we use up our contingency fund, uh, pretty much the last few years. But we still had a cash carryover at the end of the year. And with any luck at all, it looks like we're going to have a cash carryover this year. And that is. You know, not multiples, it's an order of magnitude bigger than what we're talking about.
Yes, still puts us in a tough financial position. Because the taxpayers are going to ask you, if you've got a cash carryover, why'd you opt out for six hundred thousand?
Yep.
We're gonna have to explain to them that we need to have cash reserves.
We have to have a cash carryover. I mean, we.
When I tell them, because we need cash reserves then.
Yeah, we, we'd be in big trouble if we didn't have cash.
How do I explain to them that we're spending their money on things we don't have to?
I don't think we've effectively had a cash carryover when our reserves have declined every year.
Yeah, because percentage-wise, we are.
We were at, we were at thirty-two for several years in a row and, you know, we're looking at sixteen. So I don't think we've effectively had a cash carryover.
So we're just trying to keep from drowning too much faster.
So that's why you don't spend extra money. But that's, I mean, we can discuss this all day. So I'm going to call for question.
All right.
Good.
Let's call the question. Um, and, uh, so, uh, the motion, um, Jeffrey's motion, seconded by Dick. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, um, motion carries. Wow. Any other, uh, proposals with respect to the budget? All right, then you've got enough to work on and we'll get a clean, clean copy for next week and we're two weeks from now and we'll have a formal vote. And let's see, anything on Clay County Park?
Uh, nothing new.
Okay, um, anything on building projects?
No, we just.
Okay, um. Yeah, we can do that.
I apologize. There is one small thing on the Clay County Park Board.
Okay.
Uh, Michael and I met prior to, you know, with the, uh, uh, commissions conference coming up. To look at, uh, sta- state statute a little more closely. And and it now, uh, appears upon closer reading of the statutes that, uh, state, state law allows us to do things just as we're doing them. It's fine. We don't need to, to request a change to that specific statute. So. Okay, maybe I mischaracterized that. If so, yeah, yeah. All right, all right.
Okay, great. That's good news.
Sorry if I mischaracterized that, Michael. I apologize. Yep. Okay.
All right, that's good news. Um, and any joint jurisdiction issues? Okay, then I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss contractual matters. And thank you. Thank you for coming.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to go into executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Really put thirty minutes to three hours down on my calendar today. So.
Motion out of executive session.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to come out of executive session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before us?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and two seconds to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. We are adjourned.